Video coverage of this meeting is brought to you in part by the Crest Inn and Bemis Conference Center.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please read the roll?
Alderperson Boyd.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Crivier.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Jennings.
Here.
Lewick.
Here.
Nelson. Rash.
Here.
And Mayor Walsh.
Here. Thank you. Item two, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three, approval of the minutes of the October 17th, 2017 Common Council Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Alderperson Crivier, second by Alderperson Hanson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Item four, public comment upon matters not on the agenda or other announcements. Does anyone have any announcements? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on anything not on the agenda? For the final time, anyone like to speak? Okay, thank you. Item five, recommendation from the License Committee on an application for a Class B fermented malt beverage license for the Deepure Deacons Hockey Team at 1450 Fort Howard Avenue, submitted by the Deepure Deacons Hockey Team Agent David E. Lep.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Alderperson Boyd, seconded by Alderperson Carpenter. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Item six, recommendation from the Bid Board regarding the 2018 Deepure Business Improvement District Operating Plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Alderperson Lewick, seconded by Alderperson Rash. Any discussion? Alderperson Jennings.
I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Alderperson Boyd.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Crivier.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Jennings.
Abstain.
Lewick.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Rash.
Aye.
Motion carries with Alderperson Jennings, abstaining, thank you. Item seven, ordinance 17-20, creating Chapter Nine Deepure Municipal Code regarding nondiscrimination in housing, public accommodation, and employment. It was tabled at the October 17th Common Council Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Alderperson Nelson, seconded by Alderperson Jennings. Any discussion? We do have a lot of people who signed up to speak. If no one has any discussion at this point, if you want to open the meeting?
Move to open.
Second.
Moved by Alderperson Rash, seconded by Alderperson Crivier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Since we have a lot of people here tonight, I think what we'll do is we'll try and we're going to limit it to speaking once. And a lot of people did sign up, and anyone who'd like to speak when this list is finished, we'd be glad to take you. But try and get all your thoughts together so you only have to speak once. So we'll start with Patricia Finderstone. Could you please come forward and give us your name and address right up to the tone? Table up here, please.
Good evening, Mayor Walsh and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I am a registered nurse, oh, do you know my name? I'm Patricia Finderstone, and I live at 201 North Broadway, apartment 403. I am a registered nurse. I have a master's degree in bioethics. And bioethics emphasizes critical thinking, hearing viewpoints of everyone from all different areas, and respecting those viewpoints. This evening, I'd like to share with you my opinion as it relates to anti-discrimination. It's particularly important in this time of the month, in November, when we're addressing veterans' issues. And I am an Air Force, was an Air Force nurse. I attended a veterans' meeting this afternoon out at UWGB, and I heard the beautiful words of Judge Kelly talking about our beautiful country that so many have defended and have given their lives for. It's a country that does not, should not approve discrimination. We just took the Pledge of Allegiance, and all of us said, "We support liberty and justice for all." And I hope we'll consider those words tonight as you make your decisions on this ordinance. The support and discrimination ordinance includes gender equity and expression. It addresses issues as housing and public accommodations, appropriating individual differences for all people. This is also a health care issue, and I currently serve on the Board of Health. And we did discuss this issue at our Board of Health meeting. And I strongly urge all of you to keep an open mind as you hear the discussion tonight, and remember what's best for all people, trying to avoid discrimination and respecting all people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike Lemay. I live at 512 North Erie in Deepure. I've been a resident there 15 years. I'm also a business owner, if you will, of a business in Deepure. And I want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak tonight. I have some very serious concerns over this proposed legislation, and I oppose it. And I'd like to just talk about a couple of reasons why. One of the things I'm concerned about is the safety and comfortability of our children. We are seeing incidents around the nation where these types of legislation have been passed. In fact, one happened recently in Appleton where someone claiming to be of transgender confusion go into dressing rooms and are taking photos of young girls and young boys and post them on the Internet. I have a concern over our children who go to public and private school in this wonderful city of ours, having to be forced to shower with people of the opposite sex, and many times at very young ages, at times when they're not prepared to understand everything that's going on. I think that's something parents can do a good job of talking to their children about. I'm very concerned about this with our children. I'm also concerned, as an employer, are we being opened up to potential legal liability here? If this is imposed upon us as a business owner, and something happens, some sort of assault or some sort of wrongdoing, are we as business owners going to be subject to legal liability here? My third concern is the religious exemption in paragraph F is extremely limited. And I will tell you, the organization I run is a Christian ministry. It does provide protection in housing. I see no protection in employment. I see no protection in what services should be allowed. So in other words, I, as a Christian business owner, will I be subject to going against my religious conscience and hiring someone who is not a Christian? Should a Muslim, who's a business owner in Deepure, or runs a Muslim ministry or a mosque here in Deepure, should they be subject to having to hire a Christian or someone who they oppose, who opposes their deeply held religious beliefs? I would just ask you to carefully consider the ramifications to religious freedom as guaranteed in the Constitution of the United States, that the Congress specifically shall pass no law prohibiting or restricting religious freedom or expression. My concerns with services provided, how do we define that for a church? Is a marriage a service provided? I believe it is. And churches are considered public houses of worship. So I have some deep concerns for the religious community, not just Christians, Muslims, Jews, any religion, where people of good faith are held, they have deeply held religious beliefs, that are thousands of years old. These aren't 10-year-old religions. Islam goes back to the sixth century. Judaism goes back 6,000 years, and Christianity goes back 2,000 years. We all stood up and made a pledge today, "One nation under God." God has something to say about this. God loves all people, no doubt about it. But God is also clear about these issues. Lastly, if you are considering passing this, I would just ask that we take some time. The United States Supreme Court is hearing opening arguments on a case that will have a lot of ramifications on what's decided tonight. A cake baker in Colorado who decided not to provide a service for a homosexual couple has been sued, and that arguments are being made in front of the Supreme Court, and a ruling is set to be given sometime in early February. Many of the answers that the U.S. Supreme Court gives at that time will give you the guidance to know what is legal and what is not legal. From a simple pragmatic point of view, I see no logic in passing something that very well may be overturned in three to four months, cost to the taxpayers, confusion to the community and things. So at the very least, I would just urge, why do we not table this until the U.S. Supreme Court, which is the highest authority in the land, we is in on these issues? Because the Phillips case is going to address many of these issues. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say thank you to-
Can you state your name and address?
I'm sorry. Sheldon Miles, 2151 West Melkorn Circle in Deepure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Aldermen Jennings and Hanson. In my communications with you and your responses to me, thank you, you were a very proactive alderman. So thank you for that. I'm concerned about, well, first of all, I want to express that I love this city. I think the city is a very welcoming and very inclusive community. So we all have the same vision for this community. I heard it was said that what's best for all the people. And my concern on this issue is that I see that this ordinance potentially becomes a means of discriminating, discrimination against business owners and people of faith. I believe that this potentially, if moved forward because it's such a controversial issue that is in the United States today, that it could potentially set up for lawsuits, as was mentioned by Mr. Lemay. And there are other lawsuits that are like that, that are still out there. I feel like this ordinance really sets the city up for that and for unnecessary expenditures. My question is, I know that this was passed in Sun Prairie and Light Communities, Appleton and Madison. I don't think Deepure, I don't know if you can put them in the same classification as Appleton and Madison, but maybe it likes Sun Prairie? I'm wondering if someone could answer the question, what was the difference? What is the difference between the proposed ordinances?
Judy, you want to answer these at the end?
At the end, sure.
Yeah, we'll answer them at the end. We're taking notes as to the questions that are out there, and we'll answer those at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the differences that I see was that there was a religious exemption that was given to private schools and Light Matters. And I'm wondering if the council has considered that a religious exemption. Another question that I would like to propose, and I did not feel like I had received clarity from the city attorney. We are a church, and we are potentially looking forward to hire an administrative assistant. And our concern is if we would be put into the situation where we would have to hire somebody that we are not, where there would be a conflict of interest there. And so that is a concern of mine on hiring practices of the church. I'm very concerned about the wording that is in the ordinance. I believe that some of the terms are very broad and very subjective. For instance, the definition of discrimination, it says, "Shall mean any act, policy, advertisement, or practice which, regardless of intent, has the effect of subjecting any person to deferential treatment as a result of that person's actual or perceived age." That's a really broad brush. I see that's a really broad and can really put anybody into the position of being guilty without intent. And so I just feel like that is maybe dangerous language. Under discrimination in public accommodations prohibited, it says, "It shall be unlawful for the business establishment or place of public accommodation to deny directly or indirectly." And again, I just think that puts people in a position where, that's a dangerous position, where it's very subjective. I also question the language of the term that somebody would have up to 300 days to report an incident. And in a lot of these matters, it is just a matter of he said, she said, or it could be just an action that was done. But 300 days, that's almost a year, and that would be very hard to defend oneself against such matters. So I question it. My other concern is the language, and I asked about public accommodation as to the church. And it was responded back to me that that does not apply to the church. And I'm hearing other feedback that it does apply to the church. And so I would love for the council to answer to that question. My other concern is that this maybe sets us up for reverse discrimination for religious people. My example is this, if somebody were to open up a coffee shop, I believe that there needs to be another coffee shop in the East Side. That's my opinion. So if somebody wanted to open up a coffee shop and they wanted to express their religious views, they just wanted to have a religious expression in that coffee shop, and they were to have decor that some people may find very encouraging and very honoring, particularly in the area of marriage, and where other people may say, "That offends me." So how would that work in the city, with the area of decor, in the area of posters, in order of magazines? For instance, I have with me tonight a magazine that tells a wonderful story of somebody who came out of the transgender lifestyle. If that magazine was in that coffee shop, would that be something that would be discriminated against, or people would feel is discriminating? I would like to know who makes the ultimate decision if an action was a discrimination? And then I also ask the question, with this being such a volatile issue, has it been discussed whether this could be a community referendum and push to the community to decide? So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Could we refrain from applause? We've got pros and cons all the way around, so if we could just refrain, and we'll get through this decently.
Hi. My name is Matt Cadlick. I'm over at 556 Maiden Ave in Deepure. So tonight, I just, I wanted to come really to gain some understanding of what the ordinance was. There were some concerns that came out, you know, as I read some initial emails surrounding it. And as a pastor, obviously, the initial concern was over the issue of, were the services, were a marriage, for example, would I be required to do same-sex as, you know, other people were asking as well? That was a concern for me, and it's not an issue of discrimination for me, because in the issue of marriage, for example, I won't marry a couple who was living together before marriage, and I won't marry a couple who hasn't gone through marriage counseling. So that part of it is concern for me. Also, when it comes to biblical preaching, I believe in expository preaching, and that you preach the gospel in all of its fullness. And so that was an area of concern for me as well. God has a lot to say about this issue, as he does other issues. And I was concerned that there would be, hey, you can't say that, you can't say that, though. And so that's one of those things that I just was concerned about. And then as Sheldon had mentioned, was the issue of employment. So if we're looking to hire a youth pastor, and you want to make sure that he aligns with biblical values and the values of the church, and so I just wanted to make sure that we could hire someone with those things in mind and not be forced into hiring elsewhere. So those are just some initial concerns, so I'm sure those questions will be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Right at that table.
At that table. Yeah, John Benneke. I'm at 1957 Cottonwood Court, Ledgeview. And we've been in the Deepure School District paying taxes for over 30 years already because we've owned property in the city of Deepure, and now in Ledgeview, of course. My wife and I have our own ministry also, and I have the same concerns as Mike Lemay and the others who have spoken, too. But I look at this as, these people or this nondiscrimination thing, it's covered in the U.S. Constitution, the state constitution, and they have every right. And there's no point in making some special law to suit a very small portion of the population. And we, too, are concerned about our grandkids, and of course, children are grown, but anybody's children, anybody's grandkids, to be subjected to someone who has defied what they were born to be, a man or a woman. God created male and female. And I, too, preach the full gospel, and I'm not ashamed of it. And I think that, who's to tell the potter what clay can tell the potter what to do? That's in Scripture. And I just feel that subjecting children, and this is where it's going to go, to the schools, you can be sure of that, it has in other places, and this locker room thing of a boy or a girl feeling like they're the opposite gender, and they have every right to go in that locker room? I say no. Why would you, would you subject your daughter to some guy who thinks he's a girl? I mean, this is where it's going, and it has in other places, and we can see that. And I have every other concern that the other gents ahead of me have spoken to you. And so I just urge you to table this thing, and it needs to be thought through with prayer. And I thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, for giving me the privilege of speaking with you.
Thank you. Stan Sukowari?
Yes.
How'd they do?
You didn't hear the question.
Okay, thanks.
That's a tough one.
Okay, my name is Stan Sukowari. I live at 1638 Colony Drive here in Deepure. Thank you for hearing me tonight and hearing my concerns about this. I, too, am opposed to what is being presented, and I very much, my concerns have been aired by the others before me, so I will bypass those. So I guess I'm coming at it from a little different perspective. As was mentioned about the Constitution, I, too, believe in the Lord Jesus Christ, and I, too, believe our founding fathers, when they created the Constitution. It is in the Declaration of Independence that talks about where our rights come from. And it talks about, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights." And the perspective I'm going to come at concerning this issue tonight is, when we look at our country and the many divisions that we're seeing, and the divisiveness that is happening on issues that polarize us, I see this as one of those issues that is also, you could say, fanning the flames of that kind of division. And I think as we seem to be more and more falling away from what the Bible says and what our Creator has for us and the plan that He has for us, we fall into these kind of situations where there will be conflict, and we will go after each other, and it will be hard to see the other side. And so my concern here tonight is that this is just another one of those issues that, as we've heard, and I, too, did not see it in the ordinance, that this would not apply to schools, it wouldn't apply to the public library, those kind of things. So I'm going to assume that it will, okay, just as what happened down in Sun Prairie. And so I'm going to go at it from that perspective. And that's something that, just as you heard here tonight, we're going to have lawsuits, we're going to have issues. And I, too, present that to you, and I'm not trying to shame anybody here tonight. I'm sure many of you have daughters and wives, and how would you feel if you would send them into a public restroom not knowing if there is a male in that restroom, or males in that restroom? That's a real practical thing, and I would think it's concerning to you as well. So something to keep in mind as you're considering this legislation. And I want to, let's see. Yes, and the other thing I wanted to say about the Constitution, I very much believe that the Lord gave us these rights, and that what's being proposed here tonight is not based on the Bible, and the Lord would not see this as a right of man to propose this and to enforce this. And so sometimes people say the Constitution is very old, it doesn't apply to our day. But we also know that the founding fathers were aware of that, and when they put together the Constitution, they were based on timeless principles that they knew would apply over the period of time, including our day. And so I very much believe that what they were led by the Lord in that day and what they put into the Constitution in that day applies today. And so I'm asking you here tonight to consider what is being proposed, and as I believe, this is just another thing to divide us. So here we have an opportunity to not let this divide us. And so I just ask that you would vote this down. And for those that might consider, well, what about the ones that want to get this through, remember, too, that the Lord loves them as well. He does not hate them, He loves them, His Son died for them, and He does not hate the sinner, He hates the sin. And that might sound like a strong word, but He does not hate these people. He loves these people. So that was my prayer here tonight before I came in. I hope you consider those things, and I hope that you can also vote this down. So thank you for hearing me out tonight.
Thank you. Chris Brum.
My name is Chris Brem. I live in 1604 Willard Terrace in DePere, and I appreciate the chance that I have to come before you and just say my piece, I guess, so. As leaders in this community, citizens and parents, we've always chose the safety over the feelings of individuals, and I hope at the end of this, we do the same. So we have always chose the well-being of an individual over the feelings of another. So every law that has been passed has been for the well-being of the citizens and not for the feelings of a small percentage. So as of right now, there's roughly one in four girls that have been abused. That means in this, in this room, there's probably been about 15 people that have been sexually abused, which is astounding, and this, if this bill passes, it is opening the door, in my opinion, for a lot more of this to take place. There's already been an example of this at NWTC, where a man was consistently using the women's restroom, and it turns out that he was not even enrolled, but he was a sexual predator. So I'm asking that you would do this if, if... I'm a Christian, and I believe that God has instilled certain things in, and one of them is a man is a man and a woman is a woman. And if nothing else, even if you aren't a Christian, do it for the safety of this community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Annette Grunsa. I live at 3918 St. Christ Circle, just off of Lebrun Street from DePere, and four houses in, in Alloway. I would like to urge your voting in favor of the ordinance, because first of all, this is really not an attack on anyone's religious beliefs, because though religion is important to all of us, it really is an issue about a person's human rights and not so much religious beliefs. But aren't we all made in the image of one Creator and valued and loved? So I do believe that as a parent of a transgender child, that this person has every right to be who she is, because that's how God made her. This ordinance also, actually, we've been protecting people from discrimination for a long time. We've had a law in place since 1964, the Civil Rights Act, and this ordinance is simply updating existing protections for everyone, as we said, for liberty and justice for all, to include everyone in our community. That's everyone, LGBT people, to, they have the right to have the same opportunities that we all have, to earn a living, to have a place to live, and to be worthwhile in the community, and to not have to be subjected to any type of discrimination or harassment. This ordinance does not allow men in women's restrooms or vice versa, period. We have laws that protect people. That is not the issue of a transgender person, ever, to go into a restroom and they just want to do their business and be finished. So it is not something that is an issue at all. I think the reason, I guess, we have the same things that we want for everyone. We want our families and our children to be happy and employed, and to contribute their talents and gifts to the community and to make a difference in the world. So I feel this isn't about politics as much as it is about how families can treat one another. And I guess I pose the question to any of you, what would it, what if your child had transitioned? How would you feel about this issue? I think you had some reading material to look at, you probably got a feel for that I think of my child as being the most sensitive, caring person in the world, that is very intelligent, has talent, and, and she has just a right, as much right as anyone else, to be able to move freely about in the community and to be accepted by everyone. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
John Grunsa, 3918 St. Christ Circle, West in Alloway. I'm the husband of Annette, and the proud father of Anna, who is our transgender daughter. And as Annette mentioned, this is an issue that really isn't religious-based, it's a human rights issue. In fact, the World Health Organization fully supports transgender. To bring it closer to home, in 1982, Wisconsin Governor Lee Dreyfus signed legislation giving a protected sexual orientation status in employment, housing, and public accommodations to gays and lesbians. And that made Wisconsin the first state in the country to enact such legislation. And now it's time that we add gender identity. There is, there are bills before the State Assembly and State Senate pertaining to this, but we can't wait. Why wait on something that may not come? We need to act locally first, that encourages the state, that encourages the federal government. Without protected status, transgender and gender-fluid people have no rights. They have no rights when it comes to employment, housing, and public accommodation. Just think about this for a second. If you're a transgender person, and you want to get a job, you're afraid to submit an application for fear of being rejected just because of who you are. Or if you're lucky enough to get hired, and they find out that you're transgender, they can terminate your employment right on the spot with no reasons be given. It's legal to discriminate against transgender people in housing. Can you imagine looking for a dwelling to live in and to be rejected just because of your gender identity? And then, of course, there's public accommodations. This current legal discrimination flies in the face of equal rights and equal protection under the law. I'm going to talk about my daughter for a second, if that's okay, Anna. Anna is a very brilliant lady. She has, she's a graduate of UWGB, Phi Kappa Phi, National Honor Society, a degree in computer science, and another degree in solar, or solar energy design. Yet she's not employed. Would you hire her? Would you hire her because she's transgender, or would you hire her because of her talents or what she can contribute? Unless we pass, pass such legislation, she has hardly a chance of making a difference in this world. She's also had the opportunity to move to Minnesota, where they do have protections. But she's from here, and she wants to stay here to make a better life for people in the area. Without protected status, transgender and gender-fluid people have, oh, excuse me, a significant part that we're faced with is that if people are denied employment, housing, and public accommodation, that creates a lot of, a lot of issues. In fact, over 40% of transgender people have attempted suicide. Now, this compares to 4.6% of the general population. That's about 10 times higher than the general population, because they've been rejected. They have no place to go, nobody to turn to. They just want to live life to the fullest, like we all do. I know there's been a lot of talk about the bathrooms and so on tonight. Transgender people have been around since the beginning of time, and it just, I find it interesting that the bathroom issue has just come to forefront in the last few years. Transgender people didn't choose to be the way they are. They didn't go on a whim and say, well, gee, today I think I'm going to be a male or a female. This is something that chose them. This is who they've been since birth. True transgender people are generally seeking medical and psychological professional help to help guide them through this process. It's just not somebody that's going to say, well, today I'm going to put on a dress and see what I can get away with. These are people that are under medical care, and oftentimes on hormone therapy. And so these people are serious about being who they are. In Wisconsin, in order to get their gender changed on a driver's license and other documents, they have to provide confirming documents by the doctors, and that must accompany the requests. So it's not just something that is easily done. All transgender people want is confirmation of the gender that they've always been and allowed to live a productive and confirming life. I'm not aware of any case where a transgender person who uses a bathroom of that gender identified with, who has ever done so, to prey on others. In fact, I think if you were to talk to transgender people, they're probably more afraid of being attacked by using a bathroom that identifies with their, their gender. They don't want to draw attention to themselves. They just want to use the bathroom to take care of their personal business, just like everybody else, in and out. Think about this. When is the last time you ever shared a public bathroom with a transgender person? I'll be willing to bet that all of us have at one point or another, we just didn't know it. It didn't make any difference. And yes, there are laws that protect against predators, there are laws against sexual harassment, and, so, you know, all this is doing is providing an extra piece of protection for, yes, a small portion of our society, but yet a very valuable portion of our society. After all, they're human beings just like the rest of us, they deserve the same rights. A simple solution regarding the bathroom issue for many businesses, churches, and states, and so on, is that they have gender-neutral bathrooms. You've all seen them, and they have, you know, both signs on the door, and you go in, you lock the door, and you do your business. We were out in the Pacific Northwest this summer, and the national parks out there have that, and a lot of the state parks do. And a lot of places also have family bathrooms. So I don't see that as a real issue. I guess I'm going to leave you with this. What is there to be afraid of, really? Thank you.
Thank you. Can't read this, but it's Jack Guera? Guera? Sorry.
You actually did very well, thank you.
Did I? Okay.
And mine will be short and sweet. Thank you very much for your service to our community. Thank you for your love for your child, very much.
Could we have your name?
I'm sorry, Jack Guera, 3493 Old Military Road, DePere, Wisconsin. I've been here about three and a half years, have fallen in love with the community. My primary concerns were voiced by Mike and Sheldon. I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bill Schroeder?
Hello, my name is Bill Schroeder. I live at 102 South Clay Street in DePere. I'm a Christian and an Air Force veteran. Thank you, Mayor, and council members, thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm concerned with the wording of this bill, seems a little open-ended on a few points. I think there can, could be discrimination against our Christian biblical beliefs. Businesses and churches that hold these beliefs could be forced legally to have to do things against their beliefs. Will our beliefs be protected, or will we be forced into doing things against our beliefs? Thank you.
Is it Stacy Christian?
Good evening. My name is Stacy, I'm Dr. Stacy Christian, I'm a professor at UWGB. I live at 800 Alloway Terrace, in Alloway, of course. And I am also a Christian, which I might as well say, since everyone's stating what their religion is, I am Christian and I support this ordinance. I believe as Christians, we should support this ordinance. But I'm here to talk about what is important for our students and our employees at UWGB, and people that move to this community. It's very important to understand that, as stated earlier, lesbians, gays, and bisexuals have had equity in employment, housing, and in residency for, since 1982. We were the first state to have that in place. We at this time don't have equity at all for transgender individuals. There are a large number of transgender individuals, including in our community. There's many individuals who closet themselves, you don't know they're transgender, and some people, what we call past, you can't even tell, but not everybody does. And the problem is that even our students and our employees cannot find places to rent when they first move here, because people will look at them and say, and they will say, "I will not rent you because you are not, you are transgender." We've had people say that to them specifically, in DePere also, Green Bay, Alloway, and DePere. The challenge is, then, where are people supposed to live? The problem is, we will certainly work with people that are very talented transgender individuals. At University of Wisconsin, Green Bay, we have a very high percentage of students that are transgender, because we provide equity for gender expression and gender identity. We have many talented people, A-scholars, they win scholarships awards, they win the leadership awards, they win the chancellor's medallion, because anyone who is happy to be treated equitably can have good job satisfaction, positive self-esteem, and they're not hurting themselves, they're not sitting outside of society and not participating. It's very difficult to participate if you're not provided employment, you don't have a place to live, and you go places and people won't let you buy clothing for your gender that you are. If you wear a dress because you're female, you're transsexual, you go shopping, there's some places that will not sell you clothing. That is very inappropriate. A man could go in there and buy a dress for his wife, but somehow they can decide you cannot buy a dress for yourself. To me, that's not very equitable and reasonable. Communities that recognize that all people should be equal, treated equal, take the stand, make it known that it is important to provide equal treatment for them. You can be a Christian and support equal treatment, but one thing to point out, this ordinance has nothing to do with churches. Churches allow to make decisions what they want to do. This has to do whether someone who's transgender can go to the library and check out a book, and what is wrong with that? What is wrong with them going and having tea downtown at a place with another person who's transgender and not be asked to leave? All very stressful. What's more important for me is that I have people who come and thrive at UWGB. They want to work here, they want to stay here, they want to be employed, and they have to leave, because there's only 121 places, organizations in Wisconsin where you can work, where you will not be fired for being transgender. Not just many of them are in DePere. Humana's one, Shopko is in the process, I understand, there's a few places. So essentially, they go and work for other corporations. You have a brain drain in this area, you have people who would live here that can't. You need to realize it's time to be equal treatment for all people. And the health care is very important, you have great health care providers here, they provide health care for individuals. They understand that when you're not being treated well, there's mental health issues, depression, anxiety. When people are treated well, they don't have to worry about that and become thriving people. And that's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Item, let's see, William Van Keith?
Van Kirk.
Van Kirk, sorry.
William Van Kirk, 603 Williams Street, incidentally, in DePere. And I would just like to say, I guess I agree with a lot of the people who have opposed it so far, and I would just like to, I guess, ask a question of the council and maybe get it answered at the end. What is being done to mitigate... What is being done to mitigate somebody coming in and using this law who is not transgendered as a loophole to try to prey on citizens who are just using the facilities? And I just think about my family using the Legion Park pool and going in there and a predator using it as a loophole. So that's, I guess, what I would like to have addressed, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Daniel Tyrion?
I'm not speaking.
Oh, okay. Doug Cohen?
I'm passed.
Jeff Zepnick?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Zepnick, and I live at 2111 River Point Court in DePere. I would like to say that I'm against the ordinance, primarily because of the vague language in the ordinance that leaves the churches and religious organizations very susceptible to reverse discrimination. I don't think it would be fair to have somebody who is not of the same faith apply for a job at a church and insist on being given the job. Otherwise, they would be discriminated against. I don't think that would be fair. I also don't think it's a good way to have safe bathroom, gymnasium, shower scenarios for our kids. We don't know how someone might try to manipulate this ordinance and prey on our kids. So those are the reasons that I would be against this. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Tom Barrett?
Hi, Tom Barrett, 3968 North Parker Way. We have a school at 133 South Superior as well. My question is more of a concern for this ordinance is, it's bringing up a lot of questions here tonight. I think there's a lot of uncertainty or maybe confusion as exactly what the ordinance would cover and what it wouldn't cover. My concern is, as for students and teachers as well, typically, the teachers aren't in the bathrooms. And I think, as you had stated as well, I don't think that the concern is for the transgender community. I think the concern is for those who wanna use this as a loophole. I see kids in high school, you know, kids in high school sometimes can be very mean. They can be very, very cruel. And I don't know how you would concern this if somebody came to school dressed up inappropriately and just said, "Hey, today I'm this, and you can't do anything against me because of this law." And then to go into the bathroom and say, "Well, I can go into the bathroom," is because of this law. And so I think there's a couple of things that we can look at to see, okay, how can we really protect the rights of all the people that are truly, that we wanna accomplish, at the same time, protect those who will be affected by what's passed here today or in the future? So my concern is for that and for the places of faith, whatever faith they are. There's quite a few people that have questions, concerns, that haven't been really answered to that as well. And so I'm excited to hear how that would be addressed as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matt Roloff?
Hi, my name is Matt Roloff. I live 920 Lewis Street in DePere. I moved up here a little over a year ago, and I fell in love with the community. It's a very, very beautiful place. I'm concerned about this issue. A number of other folks have expressed the same concerns. One of the big ones is the wording. I think the wording is very vague and open, as others have described. But a big concern is decency and safety. I know that this document uses discrimination in the negative. However, also remember that discrimination is also a good thing, such as discriminating between right things and wrong things, things that are safe and unsafe, things that are decent and not decent for the public. For instance, we've all probably heard and read the saying, "No shoes, no service." This is a form of discrimination. Decency and safety are required before services are rendered. This is understandable, because it protects the public and the business from the individual. Now, as others have noted in Section E, good services and facilities cannot be discriminately denied. This may seem fine, but the, at least in the document, an undisclosed problem. It classifies gender, identity expression, and sexual orientation as a protected class. And within that classification in the document, any male can self-declare that they are female and promptly follow your wife or daughter into the bathroom or changing room. Pedophile or creep or any male is now at liberty of entering the girls' locker room at the local pool. And this because they cannot deny the good services or facilities. In the same vein, a seamstress would be forced to assist a male bride in the changing room, because this is a normal service for brides. Also, a church would be forced to allow for a gay wedding in their facilities, even though it's against the religion, or fined for stopping a male from entering the ladies' restroom because they deemed inappropriate, and all in the name of nondiscrimination. If there is a passage, if this is passed, we've removed protections, privacy, security, and decency for those in our community. And these are basic rights of every individual that they should be entitled to. Thank you.
Thank you. Graham Hunt?
Hello, my name is Graham Hunt, 840 Basel Street in DePere. Thank you very much, Mayor Walsh and council, for the opportunity to speak with you today. I speak out of the three sets of concerns about this particular proposed ordinance. First, I echo others in terms of the vagueness of the ordinance and trying to understand what it may or may not include and exclude. For example, you know, as others have mentioned, does the public accommodation clause speak to the issues of locker rooms and bathrooms? It's unclear to me kind of the scope of where that goes. So if the council proceeds forward with this, I would, at a minimum, encourage some review and tightening of the language to sort out some of those open questions that others have raised as well. Secondly, I speak for freedom of conscience. Unfortunately, as often happens, as you very well know in your positions, being more welcoming and accommodating of one group can have the unintended consequences of being less welcoming and less to other particular groups of people. And I do see that there are clauses that mention religious organizations, or associations, and societies, and private clubs. My concern would be more for small business owners who may be coming from a particular conviction. You know, let's say you do have a coffee shop, or you run a gym, or something like that, and out of conviction, whether it be because of safety or religious conviction, you simply would not want someone of a different biological sex using a particular restroom. You know, are there protections for such people in terms of freedom of conscience? And I would encourage that the council may consider ways that it can strengthen the language of freedom of conscience. And then lastly, I just wanna raise the issue of, the more pragmatic issue of the fact that ordinances like these do tend to generate lawsuits. There are many organizations which use ordinances like this as beachheads in order to sue small businesses or sue city councils themselves. You know, we can think of examples historically of, you know, the bakers or the people who are making t-shirts who don't wanna make a t-shirt with a particular message. And is this ordinance opening up potential small businesses for more legal liability? And I would encourage the council to consider those things. So in summary, I would speak in opposition to this bill because of that vagueness and because of the fact that I don't see protections for freedom of conscience, and because I think it opens up people to unnecessary litigation. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Paige Vannenbush?
Hello. My name is Paige Vannenbush. I live at 1789 Grant Street, number 12, one of the very many apartment complexes on Grant. So I actually heard about this meeting on Facebook, believe it or not. I have to also commend a lot of the people that are speaking today. You've heard kind of a lot of one side. I am a Christian, as many people have stated tonight. However, I'm not gonna give you that side of my theory and thoughts behind it. I'm gonna give you another side. While I do not necessarily agree with transgender people, or gays, or lesbians, or anything else like that, it is not my place to judge them. It's not my place to say that they're wrong or that they're right. It's my place to love them and accept them for who they are, who they wanna be. I have a retail background. I was a retail manager for a number of years, in which case I assisted a lot of transgender customers. That included dressing rooms. Now, did I help dress them personally in those? No. But it was part of my job to be in the dressing room while they were in there, in the hallway, as it were, bring them clothes, different sizing. In the years that I helped those people, I never had an issue with there being any assaults or praise or anything else like that. In fact, I found it very contrary. A lot of them came to me specifically because I didn't judge them. I was open to them, I was accepting to them, I was accommodating to them. A couple months ago, I was actually, or I should say, tonight, I was discussing what I was gonna talk about tonight to you all with my husband. And he had asked and actually brought up, and we'll say, incident a couple months ago, when I was in a quick trip. We all love our quick trips around here. They're popping up, and I hope we get another one here on the West Side soon. But there actually was a time that I was in a quick trip here in, I think it actually was maybe even the Freedom one. I was bringing my five-year-old son into the bathroom to go to the bathroom. And when I walked in, there was a transgender female in there. My first thought was, cool. And I went to the bathroom, and that was it. They left. I smiled at them, and I made no further judgments, no comments, because, quite frankly, I don't care. The predators that everybody is bringing up, and I do understand that, believe you me, I do get that. Target has been dealing with that issue. Personally, I really think that you guys need to table this and discuss it a bit further. I do think that some of the loopholes that are being discussed and being brought up tonight are very valid and are very concerning. Personally, for me, my husband had joked about it, but he said, "You know what? If that's the case, if they wanna allow transgenders to use the bathrooms, and you don't know if they're a predator or not, why not allow open carry then, to protect yourself if you're going into that bathroom then?" Those are just a number of different things that could be done, you know, in, I guess, in essence with that. I love that your parents support you. I love that DePere is wanting to make its way there. But like I said, I really think that the language needs to be reviewed. I feel for the churches. I feel for anyone that doesn't feel like they're being accepted. As far as people not being able to find jobs or find housing, I do think that we do need an ordinance for that, just because that is something that isn't covered currently and would make them feel more accepted. Do I think that's for the entire greater good as far as the churches or anything like that? Probably not. So I do think the language needs to be reviewed. So my suggestion is to table it. Go through the language, really kind of pick it apart. There's been a lot of questions tonight, not only with the religious beliefs, but with the diversity, with being able to push something like this onto other people that may not necessarily agree with it. I do think is an issue, but at the same standpoint, you guys are all there, you're elected officials, and you're hearing our voices tonight. I do thank you for your time.
Thank you. Natalie Buhl?
Hi, Natalie Buhl. I live at 414 Boprey Street, all the way over in Aloe. I came tonight because I teach in the DePere School District. I've taught for 17 years in the DePere School District. And for the past 10 years, I've advised our school's GSA, which is the Gay Straight Alliance. This year, we have about 40 students in that club from the LGBT community and straight allies, gender binary allies. Our school district, for the past 10 years, has had this club. And our purpose as a club is to make sure that all students feel safe and accepted and respected in our district. When we get together for our meetings, sometimes it's very informal, hanging out and playing games. Sometimes it's more formal, something happened that a student needs to talk about, or something happened that they wanna see if there's something we can do about it as a club. Five years ago, one of our students noticed that our school has a nondiscrimination policy, our district does. And of all the protected classes in that policy, gender identity was not listed. And they said, "Well, why not?" They saw that it was other places in the country it was listed, but why not in our school district? We had a conversation about it. We talked to our administration. What's the best way to engage our school board in this conversation? And with some advice from our principal, we moved forward with a conversation with our school board members. And five years ago, they did adopt language that included gender identity in the nondiscrimination policy. So our school district is already there. Three years ago, and we've had, in the 10 years that I've been working with this group, we've had probably a dozen transgender students that I've known, some officially, some unofficially. But three years ago, we had a student who was going through the transition process, and he was concerned about bathrooms. Where should he go while he's transitioning? What's a safe place for him? So again, we opened up a conversation with our administration. What's the best way to go about this? What do we do? And the student worked directly with our principal and our school board. And three years ago, our school board adopted a very specific policy regarding how our district accepts or maneuvers through a student's transitioning process. At what point does the district start using their new name? At what point are they allowed to use the facilities that they identify with? And what do we do in the meantime with them? So again, our schools are already there. Last year, we made probably our most visible change, maybe more symbolic than anything else. But at graduation, for the past 17 years that I've been there, we've always had two different colors of robes. Black robes for students who identify as male, orange robes for students who identify as female. And again, with more conversation with students in the group who said, "What do I do if I'm somewhere else on the spectrum? What do I do? What do I wear?" And conversation with our administration, "What do we do about this?" And we looked at other districts in the area. What do they do about robe colors? Last year, for the first time, all of our students wore the same color, all black. So students didn't have to feel like they were left out if they didn't identify as male or female. So I guess what I'm saying is that our school district has made a lot of progress in making sure our students feel safe and accepted and respected. And I think it's important that our city sends the same message to them, that it's not just within the walls of our schools that they're safe and accepted and respected, but when they go into their community, the same is true. I hope, you know, that they are watching what happens here tonight. They're paying attention to this. And for them, it's not just political, it's personal. And I also just wanna speak to one thing that a gentleman said before. As a teacher, I do use the student bathrooms. We don't have fancy teacher separate-only bathrooms. I'm in the stall with all the other kids in there, too. So we are in the bathrooms. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Jill Quinlan?
Hi, my name is Jill Quinlan. I live at 1042 Countryside Drive in West Pea. And I just wanna start off by affirming, I don't know, I see the dad, I think you're the mom who spoke. I wanna start... I want to start off by just affirming your heart, and affirming your love, and affirming the journey. I grew up in DePierre, and then moved to, but I've lived all over in different, for work, I lived in LA for years, I lived in Orlando for years. I've got a lot of friends from the gay community, and some transgender friends, and I love them, and they were, they've been open with some of their struggles. And I, and I'm open with my faith, and we have great relationships, but I just want to affirm the humanity, and the value, regardless of struggle. And, you know, I think that, I can't read everyone's mind, but I know a lot of the faces here, and I know that my Christian brothers and sisters here would echo the same thing that I'm saying. Because it isn't personal, although I understand you're sitting there saying, "Don't tell me it's not personal." Because I have friends that I understand. And at the same time, I disagree with going ahead with the ordinance because of the vague wording, and because of the concern that it could result in religious freedoms being taken aback, or the litigious nature of our culture could, could, there could be issues. So I would say that's part of my concern, and again, not with the transgender community in sincerity, necessarily, but the loopholes. My daughter has a lot of special needs when we go into the bathroom. I have to lay her, she's going to be six in January, I have to lay her on a changing table, and undress her and catheterize her. And so she's kind of just out there, wherever that baby thing is, you know, that folds down. There she is, and people walking in and out. It's uncomfortable for me as a mom, and I want her to have dignity, too. But then there's that added element of, you don't know who's sincere and who isn't when they're coming in, and that. And so the other thing I would say, too, is that I'm naturally, okay, I'm naturally a loud person. I don't try to be, my voice carries. But when I'm in a library, it isn't, I have to restrain that part of my identity out of love and respect for the other people using that facility. And so it doesn't make me less of who I am, when people say, "Jill, you're being loud. You gotta keep it down." Like, my voice just carries. So I have to be intentional to just, out of respect for others, restrain that. And so I guess the bathroom issue, and the vague wording of the ordinance. So yeah, I would suggest to table it, too, and really work out how it's going to affect small businesses, schools, and religious institutions, whether it's Christian, or whether it's Muslim, or whether it's, whatever the case, so that it's clear, and that no one's rights are being impeded. So thank you for allowing us to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you. That does it for the people who have signed in. If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Again, please come up to the table. And we'll start right here, please.
My name is Trevor Faez, 5745 Conny Road W, in DePierre. I just want to speak, just from a, kind of rounding everything up, there's been a lot of discussion, both sides, good things, bad things. I think the main issue, of course, on the Christian side, is just the concern of religious liberty, and the religious freedom, to express ourselves in that fashion. Now, on the same issue, I see the other side, and anyone who would say that, "I don't want to serve you a cup of coffee because you're transgendered," well, shame on them. Or, "I don't want you to work for me if it's just like a secular job, just a regular job," then shame on them as well. But you see that there are cases, like churches, organizations, or weddings, that that religious freedom element really comes through. And although we want to be as open and inviting everyone, I'd like to also keep in mind that a person's religious convictions often, even if they're not religious, but their convictions, their personal convictions, should trump people's either comfortability and/or their not being offended. We have no right to be unoffended in every case. Now granted, no one should be purposely trying to offend someone, but we need to be careful to not force people to do things that are against their conscience, just so someone else may feel more comfortable with the decisions that they made. I fully sympathize, though, people that have struggles in the sexual nature. As someone who was sexually abused when I was young, and struggled with wrong sexuality, it's something that's dear and near to my heart. I know what it's like, and I know how strong it is. I know that not everyone can fight it, and not everyone wants to. And I really want to separate that issue, because sexual identity, to me, is kind of like, it's kind of another thing that people want to put a label on. They want to say, "This is who I am," versus, the person should be who they are. That you are not straight, gay, lesbian, or whatever, you are a person. You are a mind, you are a soul, you are someone that has value for what you bring to the table, not your other elements. So anyone that would discriminate on that, I say, you know, it's a sad thing. But in the same instance, we need to be very careful with legislation we pass through, because as much as everyone's kind of listening to their own news feeds and stuff, on the Christian side, we are getting hammered with lawsuits, and people who are purposely maliciously looking to attack Christian businesses, bakers, anything, as a means of either quick money and/or just a hatred for the Christian faith, or people of faith. They see a lot of people who are Christian or of faith as hateful bigots. But I tell you, if someone pointed a gun at a gay person, I'd immediately put myself in front of them, as someone who follows my Savior who died for the people who hated them. I thank you very much for wisdom, and I pray that you would take some time. The way that this is worded, as mentioned, is concerning, but there also are concerns on the other end. And if there can be a middle ground, that people aren't wrongly kicked out, or these other things, but also that protects our ability to express who we are, and the faith, and our Lord and Savior, and that love that He showed, to help, want to be a witness to other people, to show them the joy and the forgiveness that we have through our Savior. That'd be my primary concern. So I thank you very much for listening to every one of us. You have a very tough job ahead of you, so I do not envy you. And I thank you very much for both sides of the issue.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Noah Reeve, I live on 715 Lewis Street. I apologize, I would have put my name on the list, but I was working, so I just got here. And then from the discussion, I've heard, I've heard, I feel like I've heard this all before. I've heard this a lot of times, that we look at religion as this, I've heard a lot of people profess their Christian faith tonight. And I would like to do that as well, because I am a Christian. I was raised in the Missouri Synod, in a Wells congregation, went to St. Norbert College. I love the identity I have as someone who has a strong faith. Maybe not in a traditional way, but as someone who has a strong faith in the messages preached. And that's what I see in this bill. I see an opportunity to truly make a difference in the lives of people who truly, truly need protections. Not at the expense of religious liberty, because that is not the intent of what this language is suggesting. Now certainly, we can poke holes, we can, and understandably, people are concerned whenever this is thrown around, because freedom is a very sacred tenet of what we, as Americans, and as people, and residents of DePierre, hold dear to ourselves. And we have a long history of fighting for freedom. But I also want to state to those comments, transgender people are not free right now. They are slaves to a system where they cannot be who they truly are. This is not about wanting to discriminate against Christians, because that is not even remotely what the intent of this legislation is. It's to provide safety, hope, comfort, and a small sense of freedom that every cis person, and cis means someone who is either, who is, has a normal, like, I don't want to say normal, but is a straight sexual identity, and conforms to their gender. This bill, all it would do is give the transgender community even one iota of the freedom that we enjoy, that I enjoy, as a straight white male. It would give that to people. Do you know what the suicide rate is, or the attempted suicide rate, for transgender individuals? Anyone on the council? It's pretty high. I know it's anywhere between, it can be 40%, it can be 60%, and I mean, attempted suicide rates go up even higher than that. This is not a religious freedom question, this is a human rights question. It's a question of personal freedom, not to discriminate against a religious institution, because that is not the intent, as I've stated, but to provide simple access and basic human dignity for people in this community who need it desperately. And there might be some in this room right now who are transgender, but can't admit it because they are afraid. They are afraid of the reaction they will get, because we unfortunately live in a community, and in a world that does not truly understand them. And does not truly, and it appears does not want to understand them. We need to go forward, and we have to extend our arms, and we have to be willing to embrace them. We have to learn as a community, and we have to take this step. I think it's critically important. Thank you.
Thank you. And the blue sweater in the back? Yes.
Hi, I'm Lisa Hafte. I live at 832 Fox River Drive, and I would like to say that I am in favor of this ordinance being passed, like the other pro speakers have said. It is a matter of giving equality to everyone in our community, whether they want to wear a dress, or pants, whatever it is, they should be able to go into the businesses and be treated the same way as any cisgendered person. There should not be a question. The concerns about the bathroom issues, men transing into women are taking hormones, they don't have the kinds of sex drives that men typically have. And they, the last thing they want to do is expose themselves as a man in a woman's bathroom. They are not going to urinate in the sinks. They are going to go in, use the stalls, do their business, and get out of there. And as was previously mentioned, we probably have all been in a bathroom with a transgender person and not known it. And they don't make a big deal out of it. They just want to go in and use the bathroom. It is not safe for a man transitioning into a woman to actually use the men's bathroom. They will be the ones that experience violence. The people who are sneaking into a woman's bathroom, a man who is sneaking in, trying to pretend he's transgender, in hopes of violating women or children, are either rapists, or they're pedophiles. They are not transgender men. By the same token, no woman, you know, no woman transferring into a man wants to go in and stand in front of a sink, and, you know, pull up her, you know, pull down, and not have the equipment to use the urinal. They're just going to go in and use the stall, do their business, and get out of there. And they don't want to attract any attention. Most transgender people don't want to go into the locker room and strip down and take a shower in front of the other kids. If you're worried about it in school, they aren't, they just don't do that. They go home and, you know, keep their gym clothes on and go home, or they just put on their school clothes and go about their business. It's just, those, questioning whether someone is going to abuse either women or children in a bathroom because someone is transgender is absolutely false. The one example given was a heterosexual, straight man who went in and abused, raped, tried to rape a woman in a bathroom. That was not a transgender individual. There have been no recorded instances of transgender people going in to use bathrooms just so that they can peep at women, or look at little girls. They're just, they just don't have that interest. So getting excited about that, and saying, "Oh, there's so much safety involved," it just isn't true. We should be looking at this as a human rights issue, as opposed to a religious issue. We are supposed to, our government, forefathers gave us separation of church and state, and so religious preference has no part in this conversation about whether there's an ordinance to give transgender people equal protection under the law. It just simply shouldn't have anything to do with it. And I've got to say, shame on all of you people who come up here and be Christian, and say that their way of doing things is more valuable, their rights are more valuable than a transgender person's rights are. And to be so un-Christian as to not want to give equal protection under the law to all members of our community is the last thing their God would have wanted. I believe the first commandment was, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." And then, Jesus' first teaching was, "What you do to others, the least of our others, you do to me," which translates into the same thing. You don't get one set of standards for Christians, and one set of standards for non-Christians, or people who don't agree with exactly your brand of Christian, Christianity. I could sit up here and say that I'm offended by all of this, "Oh, we'll pray together over this," or, you know, "We hope that you'll look at this through God," you know, "and come to the right decision." That has no place in our government. And if Christians are preaching against equal rights for all people, that is just simply not Christian. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
It's been kind of a long evening, so I'll keep this brief. My name is Anna Gronseth. I live at 1620 South Huron Road, over in Bellevue. But, you know, I spend a fair amount of time and money here in DePierre, and it's an important part of my community. And I'm speaking up tonight, just, you know, we've heard a lot on, a lot of sides of the issue regarding this ordinance, and I'm speaking up as somebody who would actually, directly be affected as a transgender person. And what it simply comes down to is this, is I, like all others in the trans community, are looking for just equal opportunities, to be, you know, treated and respected like everybody else hopes to, to be able to live, work, raise families, and go to school, just like everybody else. So when I'm here in DePierre, I want to know that I'm going to be safe, and valued, and respected. And I want the same for all of my other trans siblings, and basically, everybody else in the community. We deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back?
Hi, my name is Hyvee Gonzalez. My address is 425 South Monroe Avenue in Green Bay, Wisconsin. But I work here in DePierre at St. Norbert College. I just wanted to speak in support of the ordinance, because, for a variety of different reasons, I can say, I am a Catholic, born into a Catholic family, being Catholic is a big part of my faith, and... and one of the reasons why, originally I'm from California. My family's lived there for many generations. We moved to Milwaukee, lived in Milwaukee for half my life. I, just a year ago, left the job in Milwaukee to move to DePere and to work at St. Norbert College. One of the things that brought me to St. Norbert College was the Christian and Catholic value, especially the Norbertine value of communion, which, if you are not familiar with that, communion is about being in communion with each other, in community with one another, to be able to support one another regardless of background, and is also very grounded in the gospel's vision for justice and supporting those who need it most. So I just wanted to show my support for the ordinance, to show how that supports, shows that DePere is a community where we are kind of opening and embracing people to come in and kind of take them as members of our community and show how we can address their needs when they're needed, but also to show that DePere is one of those places that can be a place where people feel accepted and want to move here and live here and work here. As a young professional, when I'm thinking of places that I want to stay, like I left Milwaukee to come live in DePere, to work in DePere in Milwaukee, I want to see DePere as a place where I can live and have a family and that they can feel like the values that I have as a Christian, but also just as a future parent, that those values are instilled in the community that I want to be a part of. I also wanted to bring up, I worked as a runaway prevention specialist in the Fox Valley Brown County area. There are no really support services for youth who run away in the area, so one of our services in Appleton was one of the only ones helping support youth who are running away. Many of those youth were also LGBT. They're running away because they didn't feel like they had support from different businesses, from their schools, sometimes from their families, and a lot of the times we see is that they want to be able to find places that they can go, especially when you're working with youth who are at high risk and they want to be safe, especially like now it's starting to get winter cold days. Like, we have to figure out what places are good for them to go, that they can get the resources they need, and if we don't see that they have the support they need, that's not somewhere we want them to go. But once again, yeah, just to go back to the idea about safety, I'd like to reiterate that there are no statistics of trans individuals or otherwise harming other students. A lot of those statistics come from young men hurting other women, and they're transgender individuals, those rates are very low. I would also like to point out that the laws, there are laws in place for people who are pedophiles or rapists, and they go through their own judicial process, so this ordinance would only be able to add support to trans individuals who feel like they don't have the rights that they should be, should have as human beings. And just lastly, like, people want to say, as a Christian and as someone, I don't think that the Bible or God tells us to close our doors to anybody. I don't think that it calls us to push anyone away. It calls us to bring them in with love and open hearts and open hands. So, yeah, once again, I just wanted to echo my support for the ordinance and to show how that is important, especially from a legal stance, where we can have the different beliefs and faiths that we have, but also we should not be allowed to discriminate anyone and use that as a weapon to do so. I think that's very ingenuous, and to put it back onto a legal stance, that is kind of where we are, whether we're giving someone a legal obligation to discriminate against someone or not, or to provide someone with the rights that they deserve as human beings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Blue shirt?
Ed Foral, 2219 Jamesford Avenue in Green Bay. I want to applaud the council for bringing this issue forward. I believe personally that this is a human rights, civil liberties issue, and what I would ask is, from going this point forward, look at proposed verbiage, try to separate, look at the core. Is there a segment of our society, of our community that's being marginalized, that's being discriminated against? What are the goals going forward? What you want to do if we're talking housing, employment, all of those issues? Look at other communities that have ordinances in place. City of Appleton, I believe, has an ordinance. I'm not sure what other communities have an ordinance. How are they addressing some of the concerns that have been brought forward? How are they handling, if this ordinance is going to be so broad to address restrooms, whether it's going to be more restrictive where that isn't an issue? And try to go forward in a pragmatic manner, separate the emotion from the issue, look at actual statistics on communities that have had these ordinances for years or even decades, and then look at how do we protect all of our citizens, all of our people in the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, in the back?
Hello, my name is Miranda Bondi. I live at 825 Urban Dale Avenue in DePere. I would like to speak in support of the ordinance and just add to some commentary regarding other cities who have done it. I was at an LGBT summer last, or summit, excuse me, last week, and the mayor was, the Appleton mayor was on a panel, and during that, there was some discussion about their ordinance for anti-discrimination similar to the one being proposed today. And his commentary was, "It's been nothing but great for the community in showing support, equality, and all actions against it have been not punitive." So I think that's really important to remember, and they've had this in place, and they are dealing it more so as an opportunity to teach and learn rather than create punitive actions. So again, support of the ordinance, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, in the back?
My name is Brad Voltmer. My address is 186 Cavill Way in Ledge You. I realize that's not in DePere, but my backyard neighbors are in DePere, and my children attend DePere schools. I am a Christian, and I realize that we as Christians have not done a good job of educating the rest of the community on what God's Word says. I'd like to start with the very first word, the very first verse of the Bible. "In the beginning God created the heavens and the earth." And that's important because here in America, we've got a fairly famous saying that says, "Possession is nine tenths to the law." We recognize that what God created is His. We are His. We are not free to make our own decisions. He made us. As it says further on in the first chapter in verse 27, "So God created man in His own image. In the image of God He created him. Male and female He created them." God did not create a third gender. God did not create other genders. Those are things that men have devised. Further on, we see in Deuteronomy, Chapter 22, "The woman shall not wear that which pertains unto a man; neither shall a man put on a woman's garment, for all that do so are abomination unto the Lord thy God." Further on in Genesis, we have the story of Abraham and Lot, and in that time period, we know of only one city that was destroyed by God because the people could not restrain themselves. And when the angels of God Himself came down to see if the sin was as bad as He had heard, the people of the town surrounded Lot's house and demanded that He send out these angels who had come under His roof so that they could take advantage of Him. And because of that, God destroyed their city. We don't want to be under condemnation from God. There's no reason why we should give in to these urges and allow ourselves to be led down that path. Thank you.
Thank you. Right in the front?
Hi, my name is Kayla Johnson. I live at 2073 Bridgeport Court, apartment seven in DePere. I am currently an MSW student, so I'm working on my master's degree in social work at UWGB, and I would like to bring forward not so much my beliefs and my opinions, but some facts that are out there. The life expectancy for a trans woman of color is thirty-five years of age. Currently, the attempted suicide rate for people of trans is seventy-five percent. Those without support are more likely to succeed in that suicide. When you look at people who are more likely to go into a restroom and use the excuse of trans rights, it's straight men. It is not people who are trans. No cases have been outlined as somebody of trans going in and using it as the purpose of wanting to discriminate or to prey on somebody. It was brought up that about one in four women will be sexually assaulted. Statistically, most sexual abuse and rapists are middle-class heterosexual cisgender white men, not trans individuals. When we look at the Bible and everyone that has come up here and talked about the religious reasons why we need to go one direction or the other, we also need to remember that there's separation of church and state, and that if we ask a hundred different people from a hundred different religions, we're going to get a different answer on where they stand on trans rights or if they identify people of trans. Some cultures and some religions identify up to five genders, if not more, and that's just what we've been able to document to this point. People under the trans umbrella are very much just looking for the same rights and liberties that everyone else is able to experience on a daily basis. They're not looking for a leg up in the world. They're currently starting their day at a negative eight. They are just asking to start at zero, like everyone else does. I just ask that we consider the rates of trans individuals who are being victimized, who are being killed either at their own hand or at the hand of somebody else, and consider them as what they are, human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. My name is Bobby Lovell. I live at 2353 Talladega Speedway in DePere. Been there for fourteen years. I am a straight cisgender resident who supports the ordinance. I would like diversity and inclusion to be valued norms in my community. Transgendered individuals suffer from gender dysphoria, which occurs when a person's gender identity does not match his or her anatomy. That is why they are in this situation. This is a health condition that does not threaten others. Most of us would find it extremely inappropriate to discriminate against people who face other health or appearance-related challenges, and I believe gender dysphoria should be no exception. As mentioned before, we stand to benefit culturally and economically from the perspectives and talents that transgendered folks stand to contribute. Seems a number of people who oppose the ordinance, you know, are not as concerned about transgendered behavior as much as males who might, you know, use this as a loophole, as mentioned previously. Maybe we need to take a bigger look at how we're raising young men. But that's another issue. I hope that you pass the ordinance and secure DePere's reputation as a place where all law-abiding residents can feel valued, safe, and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes.
Hey, it's great to be back. I made notes, though, this time, so that I wouldn't get off-topic or ramble on too long, if you believe that.
We need your name and address, please.
Absolutely. I thought you knew. Kevin Bauer, 842 Westwood Drive. I am an over-forty-disabled veteran, putting me in at least three protected classes according to the new ordinance. For me, this is not a religious issue. I have nothing against any protected class. My beliefs are not at issue. I simply don't care. You go out and be you, whatever that entails makes no difference to me whatsoever. My issue is an issue of place and municipal overreach. The onus of making these decisions would fall upon the city administrator, who is not in law enforcement, not a judge, not a jury, not even an attorney, or an expert in discrimination. While he's equipped to handle a lot of things and very qualified at his job, Larry is not equipped or trained to handle discrimination issues. Furthermore, he's not elected, nor is he part of the judiciary where this responsibility belongs. Would this potentially also expose the city to litigation in a so-called shotgun lawsuit should his decisions not prove correct in a court of law? It's not the place, it's not the level of government to decide this issue, and if it is, can you imagine what an odd patchwork this country could become? Imagine a similar situation in another city that does not hold the same values that DePere does, in one way or another. Imagine the city administrator being replaced by a person that does not share the values and how that could change how those decisions are made in the future. Now, I know Larry is a man of dignity and a man of honor, but you may not always have that. So in conclusion, I know you're waiting for that part. It's not the city's role to decide which groups are worthy or not worthy of being a protected class. Don't table this. Defeat it. It's not a city-level issue. Let's get back to working on things that are, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? In the back?
Lisa Rafferty, 214 Lori Way, DePere, Wisconsin. Came here really with an open mind, listening intently. Shared some of the concerns, learned a lot today. I think one of the issues brought up was an issue of association. I have a concern about that, too, and that was specifically to the public places, and I think about a situation as my husband is a business owner, and he's not, it's not a religious institution, but he should have the ability to discriminate in what he wants to do and doesn't want to do, by virtue of my line of veto. I mean, we as a married couple, if he's going to take a job that I don't agree in the place and the style, for instance, I may not agree with him taking a job, for instance, in a strip club. I would like the ability to say, "No. Has nothing to do with transgender. It has nothing to do with other issues. It's my, our abilities as business owners to have the freedom of association." So that is one of my concerns. I think what I heard tonight, this is a very complex issue. There's a lot of far-reaching implications of what happens. I, much like Kevin, you do what you want on your own time. It's not my business. I don't judge. It's yours, and as long as it doesn't affect my rights, I have no problem. Because it's such a complex issue, I really feel like this should be addressed at the state level. Now, I know that there has been some legislation that has been proposed. I don't know the status of it, if it's stalled. Perhaps it's stalled because of these many issues. Someone brought up the cake story. I don't know what state that was in. I think there's so many things that we're trying to work out as a society. I don't think you'll find anyone in the room that says, "Hey, I'm for discriminating." I don't think that. Anyone would raise their hand. That's like saying, "Hi, I'm anti-education." That just doesn't happen. So it's not that, I think, people here are saying, "We don't want to afford you your rights." I think the challenge is, when we talk about gender identity, is it's a fluid definition. It's a self-proclaimed definition, and so it makes it more difficult to translate that into law and judge that. You can clearly say, "Hey, I'm a certain age." There's no change in your age. If I had a fourteen-year-old child who says, "I want to be an eighteen-year-old child," that's just not going to happen. I'm fifty years old. I want to be twenty-five. That's not going to happen. Does that mean that I should be afforded certain rights? You know, I think, and I'm not trying to belittle someone's rights. I'm just thinking that, I'm saying these things out loud because they are challenging. They're allowing us to hopefully have respectful, productive discussions on this so that we can understand what makes sense. But like Kevin, I think employers who are trying to administer human, or their human resource departments, having all these different, I think of like businesses that operate in multiple jurisdictions, trying to keep multiple jurisdictions, trying to keep their policies fluid, if we have city ordinances, that has got to be overwhelming. And I think that's why, as Kevin said, this really belongs at the state level, so that we don't make it so difficult for businesses to streamline their policies. But even beyond that, I think this must be very challenging for the council, to be in authority to make a decision, but not be in authority on civil rights. And I think that's where the resources and city and federal levels are better equipped to handle this issue. So I agree with Kevin as well, that I believe that this proposal should be voted down. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Andrew Albright, and I live at 400 North Monroe Avenue, Green Bay, apartment 318. I'm transgender, so sitting in on this has been quite the experience. And one of the things that I wanted to mention is that when we're talking about job stability and housing stability, you are also talking about job instability and housing instability. I have a friend right now who's looking for a job, and it's a very real possibility, like facing violence, when you're going in and you're trying to match up, you know, my name doesn't match what the documents I give you are going to do. It's not just, this isn't a question about religion, this is a question about safety and stability. And I want you guys to consider that if you are going to vote to not give us stability, you are voting to give us instability. And what happens to us when we don't have housing stability and when we do not have job stability? And that's all that I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you. Erin? Erin? No, you're not going to?
My name is Erin Linton. I live at 560 South 9th Street, DePere, Wisconsin. I am a lifelong DePere resident, as were my parents, my grandparents, and my great-grandparents. I would urge the members of the council to approve this ordinance today. I have been sitting in this room for quite a while and debated for a while as to whether I would even get up here and speak. But I was concerned by some of the statements I was hearing in opposition. They reminded me a lot of the arguments that were used against desegregation during the civil rights era, and it genuinely, genuinely concerns me. I care a lot about our city, and I think I've ran into each and every one of you at some point, either in my personal or professional life, and I think you guys know that I care about this city. We have an issue in not only our city, but also our region of a perception of intolerance. It's something that I've spoken to about with many business leaders, community leaders, people in positions of hiring at many of our major employers in the city. They have a difficult time attracting top talent to come live in our area because of the perceived racial attitudes and perceived attitudes towards the LGBT community. Whether those perceptions are warranted or not, I think everyone has their own opinion on that. I personally haven't seen that, but I know other people who do feel that they do exist. I think it is important that we send a clear message that everyone is welcome in our city, period. Not "some people here," or "some people here," or "only in this situation." As far as I'm concerned, nobody should be discriminated against within our community, period. Whether that be jobs, anything, it doesn't matter. We are created equal under the law. That is the entire premise of the democracy that we have in this country. I'm concerned about some arguments that I heard about abdicating our responsibility to handle this issue. I don't hear very many people say that the state should be handling some of these issues when it comes to things like dark stores or anything along those lines. Our ability to handle that within our community is our right, is our power, and we have the authority to do so. I do not think it's right for you to kind of kick the can down the road and not own up to addressing this issue. That's what you were all elected to do. I know that this is a difficult decision, probably, for some of you. I know it's not an easy decision, either. But when you put your name forward to be elected to office and when you were sworn in, you swore an oath to look out for the best interest of this city. And I firmly believe that the best interest of the city is to adopt this ordinance. It creates a clear message that everyone is welcome in our community. It sends a clear message to our employers that we want them to bring the best talent to this area. And it sends a clear message to the residents that we're all equal and that we're all in this together. One of the things I've always prided this community on is how we stick together, we have each other's backs, whether it be through volunteering or whatever the case might be. We are one community. And I think we should really own up to that tonight and make sure that all members of our community feel welcome living here. I also heard an argument earlier tonight about First Amendment rights and freedom of religion, and I think that's a little misplaced. The reality is, is that the city council does not have the authority to override the First Amendment or protections of freedom of religion. Individuals are still completely 100% entitled to practice their religion, and this ordinance would have zero effect on that. And I think any insinuation otherwise is just dishonest. But ultimately, I urge the members of this council to make a difficult decision. It may be unpopular, and you probably got a lot of emails about this issue. But at the end of the day, your job is to make those difficult decisions. That's what you're here for. And it's important that you make the right decisions that will set our community up for not just the next five years, 10 years, but 20 years, 30 years, 40 years. We have a real opportunity here to send a clear message, and I hope that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes. Right in front.
Hi, Amanda Kim. I live at 912 South Jackson. I work at St. Norbert College, and I'll be brief here. I think what is being discussed is just common decency afforded to all individuals and individual rights to be able to have a place to live, be able to support oneself, be able to participate in the public life, and to hear what was referred to as the freedom of association being equated with the right to be able to function in society and support oneself, I think is misplaced. And knowing that we have individuals, we already, at the state level, have non-discrimination policies in place for sexual orientation. So that's already covered, that's not an issue. And so this ordinance, I believe, speaks specifically to prohibiting the discrimination against individuals for their gender identity and expression, which means that it's the act of discrimination that's prohibited, rather than it being an ordinance for hiring individuals of trans or gender non-binary identification. And so people are talking about the possibility of having to hire or have someone in their midst that is of trans or gender non-binary status. But actually, we're talking about just the right to be able to have access to that opportunity, the right to apply, the right to seek housing, not the guaranteed right to have every job you apply for, every place you want to live at, in which case I think we might have a different story. But given that we're talking about just the right to apply, I think that's the right that we expect most people to be able to have access to in a place that one would consider decent and fair. And so I hope that all of you will do the brave thing that our state government officials are not able to do, and recognize that at one point in time, all the women in this room would not have had the option of being free to move about because there were no public bathrooms available for women, because only men traversed outside and engaged in the public life. And there were places and time in our history when persons of color were not granted the right to have own property, to be able to apply for jobs, to be able to have housing. And so that happened because people were brave enough to speak up and step forward. So I hope you'll remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, in the back.
Hi, Calvin Hunt, 840 Basel Street. Off the bat, I'm a Christian. To the transgender people here, I love you, I love you, I love you, because Jesus loves you, and He loves you, and He loves you. But in the same regard, I want to feel open and able to be able to share truth with love. Many mentioned tonight about intent. I don't care the intent of a law. I care about what it does. I think we can all agree that some laws don't accomplish what they intend to. It's just plainly obvious. The intent of this proposal is to help the transgender community and also not infringe on the religious freedom or a business's freedom, and that's obviously the intent. But I don't believe that it approaches this or fully addresses that, because it's just simply much too vague. So I would urge a no vote on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Eric Cunningham, 131 South Place Street, DePere. As stated, as the wording is right now, I would oppose this. I would ask that the language be tightened up. I really feel like it leaves small businesses and religious organizations open to reverse discrimination. As far as my concern is not with the transgender community, but with the predators and the abuse. I believe that there are a lot of loopholes in this language, and I would ask that that be reconsidered. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? For the... Okay. Please come forward. I can't see you. Or remove the post.
My name is Pat Warrior. I live in DePere, 1251 Franco Court. I apologize for coming late. I've been working. Hope I'm not repeating things. But I'm wondering about, are we too far down the road on this thing in regards to our ability to understand both sides of the issue? It seems like almost an information bias. We have so much information right now that's so pro the LBGT. We've seen them strong-arm and do things, where I'm not sure that all the information from the other side of the tracks are being looked at, so that we can look and decide what the truth is. And really, the issue is, is do you want the truth more than you want what you want? Or is this just a verdict in search of evidence? I don't know if Paul R. McHugh was brought up tonight, medical, he was Harvard Medical, Johns Hopkins University. Does anyone know about Johns Hopkins University? Do you know that the number-one medical research hospital in the world? Do you know they've been that for 20 years? Do you know who the chief of psychiatry is there? And was up until 2001? Paul R. McHugh. Paul R. McHugh has a thought about transgender after watching all the things that's been going on in our nation. Presently, the position he holds, it's a mental disorder, and that article came out in April. Whether he's right or whether he's wrong, dollars to donuts, nobody's even studied that, because it's not politically correct for you to stand on this side of the fence. It's more politically correct for you to sit on the other side of the fence, where these things are considered as okay. And maybe they are, but until we do our research, aren't we getting the cart before the horse? That's like saying you have 100 people that drive back and forth over from east Green Bay to west, and you decide to put up four bridges. You go, "Well, wait a minute, that might be overreaching. We don't need that." So my concern is, and we've been watching with the LBGT community for about the last 20 to 30 years, starting back when they were giving, when, remember, giving blood? Remember the controversy? They wanted to take off anything that had to do with sexual orientation off of any application when you went to give blood. They were strong-arming those organizations that took in blood. Do you know if you go give blood today, they still ask you? Because medically, there's a problem if you live that lifestyle and the effects of it. The LBGT didn't care about that. They wanted their rights. They wanted their rights more than they cared about our health and our needs. Now, I'm not saying that's the same group that's in charge of it today. Maybe there are great people in charge of it today, and maybe they wouldn't hold that same position. But I'm saying, we've been strong-armed, and media doesn't support. More times than not, they'll support the LBGT side of things more than they will the regular people that are just in this room trying to make a point. As far as religious discrimination and all those things, okay, you know, whatever that dialogue is, is whatever it is. But the other thing that I'm concerned about, too, even the woman that talked, that she's transgender, is she going to guarantee me that 20 years from now, she's still transgender? What guarantees that? Is that a surgery? I mean, when you finally say, "So transgender, I can't afford the surgery for the change?" And if you can't afford the surgery, I mean, what are we really saying here? And then if we are transgender, if I go down tomorrow at the YWCA to take a shower in the women's shower, I want to know what the police are going to do. If I say, if the women say, "I'm uncomfortable," I say, "All I have to do is say I'm transgender," do I get a letter from the mayor that says, "He's okay. He's transgender. This is my mom. Does she write me a note?" I mean, what makes, how, it just seems like we're so far down the road on this, when we haven't even taken the first steps to consider the other side and to really think through this. I'm concerned about it, because I don't think we've thought about it enough, and I think right now, it's a political correctness that goes on with this. I tell you, the other thing to study, too, is scurvy. Might not be relevant to you, or you might not think it is. But when scurvy was first being discovered, the person that discovered scurvy, and this is back hundreds of years ago, he discovered that by eating fruit, you didn't get it. Do you know thousands of people were dying, working on ships because of scurvy? And you know they didn't take the person's opinion to actually solve the problem? And he showed them the problem, but culturally, culture had turned it, they didn't want to hear it. And it went another 100 years before they finally solved it. And he had the answer all the time, and was giving it to the people. Now, I'm just saying that when we start getting culturally directed, we seem to get so wrapped up, we swing so far over to the other side, that we miss the balance. And all I'm asking of this council tonight is find the balance. Do your homework on the other side, because you know as well as you sit there, it's not popular taking the other side of this. And taking the side of the transgender is the popular thing. It's media-popular, and it's culturally popular in general, the way our nation has got it positioned right now. And I think you can get lost in the dialogue and have to come back to say, "Do I want the truth more than I want what I want?" Because when you study the truth more than you want what you want, can you put yourself at neutral and say, "What is the truth here?" And go look for it? And I think that's more of the issue that we're wrestling with tonight. Again, no offense to anyone, but again, I don't see this as discrimination as much as lack of homework and us not really looking at the other side and realizing, too, that there's been a lot of mouths closed on that side of the fence, which is the side that might not be for this ordinance and the things that are associated with it. So I'm just asking for us to take some more time to think about this, because I think it's worth the time. because I think it's worth the time. And, uh, I think it puts people in an awkward position. Uh, when we're, when we're taking showers, I mean, you know, when we're in locker rooms, my granddaughters, with my wife, you know, there's just things. And I'm saying, is that, what, what is the greater discrimination here? And, and the other thing that I'm confused about, if I am a transgender person, I've never used, if I'm a woman using a man's bathroom, I've never done that before. How do I know that makes me feel better? Is there research on that? Oh, I feel better now because I get to use a man's bathroom. I've never done it before, but I absolutely know this is gonna make it better for me. How do you know that? Where's the research on that? I mean, maybe, maybe there is, and maybe there's all sorts of things to learn from it. But I, but it seems like overreaching right now for something that we really need to take some time to consider. So, that's my few thoughts on it. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you. In the back.
Hi, my name is Megan Borchardt, um, 1146 Ninth Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin. The gentleman that was just talking about the study about transgender and mental health, that's been discredited. There is nothing like that in any mental health book out there, along with gays and lesbians, that has been undone, um, as a mental disorder. It really disturbs me that there are so many people in this room living in fear. Bad things happen every day to good people. There's nothing, I mean, there are rules and regulations and laws that help us get through those things, those traumas. But it can happen to anybody. Bad things happen to everybody every day, all across our world. I would urge you to support the trans law, the LGBT community, and put aside those fears. You know, things, things in this world change at such a rapid pace. I pray every day, you know, for love and connectedness because our nation is divided right now. We don't see eye to eye on so many things. But that doesn't mean that we should pressure people to see things the way we want them to see them, either. Everybody has the right to their own opinion and to, to judge or not judge others if they see fit. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, hi, everyone. My name is Laine Moran. Uh, my address is 2414 Cantor Lane. I live in Ashwabanon. Um, I'm an MSW student at the University of Wisconsin, Green Bay, and my area of specialization is work within the LGBTQ community, specifically, uh, community empowerment and activism. Um, I think there was some misinformation, um, given here tonight about HIV and AIDS status. The fastest growing group of, uh, uh, AIDS diagnoses are African-American heterosexual females. Um, I am a member of the LGBTQ, LGBTQ community. Also a person of Jewish faith, and I refuse to live in fear anymore. Um, I'm not here to strong-arm anyone. I, I perfectly swear. Um, I'm just here to advocate for, uh, civil rights and human rights. Um, so I strongly, uh, encourage you to, uh, pass this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes.
Hello, my name is Lauren March, and I live at 550 South Ninth Street in West DePere. And I would just like to show my support of this organization and also to talk a little bit about, uh, sex and gender as, um, I've heard a lot of discussion about, um, God or creation of children being born male or female. And I'd like to say that we forget often about the intersex in the situation, which is, uh, one in 2,500 children are actually born intersex, which means that their sex is ambiguous and doctors nor their parents know whether they are male or female in gender. And often, this decision is made by the doctor or the parents at a later date, um, usually because the genitalia is, is uncertain whether the child is male or female. Um, and since that, uh, decision is made by the parent and not the child, perhaps the child feels at a later date that they don't identify with that sex that was given to them, um, by their parent or by the doctor, that was not their choice. So I think we should take that into consideration that maybe, uh, people don't identify with the gender that was originally given to them as a child as that that was not their decision to make. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes.
Hey, thank you so much for having us. Uh, Kirk Rivers, 2692 Ravine Way, uh, it's in Green Bay, but I figured everybody else was talking, so I would too. Uh, I think the concern here is that, um, this, this, this ordinance is just gonna trade, many of the concerns of many of the people in the room, is that this is just gonna trade one kind of discrimination to a different kind of discrimination. And the main push is this ordinance and the wording behind it. And, uh, it's just, it sets us up for different kinds of discrimination. And so my, my, my request would be to just review it, check it out, and see if there's a better way to say all of this. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Jane Faldosan. I live at 3915 St. Croix Circle, four blocks from DePere. But I'm here because I taught for 39 years at West DePere High School. I just want to say two things because much has been said. And first is that one of the things, I loved West DePere. It was no place that was more home than West DePere. There's nowhere I lived or spent more hours than West DePere High School. And one of the things I liked best, wasn't perfect, but it was a very accepting school. Could get kicked out of another school at West DePere. Kids were nice to that person. They were accepting. They were accepting. And I always thought DePere was. When I came in here, I didn't know who was gonna be for or against. This really nice man that helped me with my coat on, I suspect we're on opposite sides of this. I just didn't know who was gonna be on which side. Some of these people here, I taught, two of whom spoke, I taught. And I'm so proud of them. But the thing I want to say is, and I taught English, so kids wrote things to me and kids talked about things to me in my classes, issues. Sometimes literature can bring a lot up. And one thing I want you to know is the kids that are LGBT, this is not an easy thing to be. Those who have fears cannot begin to understand a high school kid who thinks they are L-G-B or T. Or who know they are and don't know what to do about it. All I want you to know is that it's not easy, and you don't have to be afraid of these people. You do not have to be afraid. There's a young person in this room who cried through most of this. I felt like crying. I feel like crying. I love DePere. I bleed orange. Sorry, red bird, but... Please, please be the city that West DePere High School is already.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? For the final time, anyone else like to speak? Yes.
Hi, my name is Oscar English, and I currently do not have a residence. Um, I am here to, I'm transgender. I came out over seven years ago. Um, sorry, I'm very nervous. Um, I live at something that is referred to as stealth, where I don't usually come out to people. Um, I had a job interview recently in DePere where after I disclosed to the person giving the interview that I was trans, the hour and a half following the interview, into the interview was only discussed was, what surgeries have I had? Am I planning on having surgeries? Um, and question, invasive questions that weren't really necessary to a job. Um, um, I was raised Christian. I grew up in church. Um, uh, my parents had a hard time accepting it. When I went off to college, I, I grew up in Illinois. I moved to Wisconsin three years ago. I went to a private college in Illinois and received death threats when certain students found out that I was trans. I was being stalked and I had messages on my dorm room. I was threatened to be set on fire. Um, and I just ask you if that is something that you want to tell people, your students at St. Norbert and the other schools in the area, that that is okay? Um, I come to you not asking, or not saying that Christian principles aren't important to them and that we shouldn't consider their viewpoints, but that I deserve a place to live and that that shouldn't be denied to me just because of how I identify. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? For the final time, anyone else like to speak? The entertaining motion go back to regular order?
Second.
Uh, moved by Alder Person Rash, second by Alder Person Boyd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Pardon? Okay, well, we'll take a, just, uh,
Two-minute break.
Two, two to five-minute break. Okay, at this time, I'd like to go back to, um, our regular order. Uh, if there's any people in the hallway, if you'd like to invite them in, that'd be great too. But, uh, just so we can get back to, uh, the business, so, um. Okay, uh, there were a number of questions that were brought up, and I will have, uh, the city attorney address the ones that you can.
Okay, I'm trying to reboot. My computer went asleep while we were breaking. But I'll see what I can do while it reboots. Um, starting from the top, uh, Pat Fenderstone didn't have any questions that I, that I wrote down. Sheldon Miles, um, concerned about the ordinance being potentially discriminatory against others. Um, what, what I can say is there's been a lot of misinterpretation of the ordinance. I don't know how that all came about, but there is, uh, clearly a, a significant misunderstanding about the intent of the ordinance. If you look at section 9-1, per N.A., the very last paragraph, it says, "Where applicable, this chapter shall be interpreted and, and applied consistently with the provisions of Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, 42 U.S.C. 2000A, 42 U.S.C. 3601, and certain state laws, all regarding employment, housing, and, um, public accommodation discrimination." So this isn't just an ordinance that is, um, interpreted outside the scope of any state or federal laws. It's interpreted exactly within the scope of, of state and federal, uh, laws and also specifically does not cover any state or federal cause of action for any current protected classifications. So it, it is really a, an ordinance that is intending to simply bring under the protections of, of the LGBT, uh, group, uh, bring, um, include them in the same protections that other classifications have. So if a church has a concern about having to perform weddings for, um, LGP, LGBT couples, my question, or my response would be, well, if you don't have that responsibility right now for sexual orientation, then you don't have to worry about it for LGBT because the same, the same rules will apply. Um, so this, this ordinance, um, takes the definitions of public accommodation out of state law, which is what I'm trying to find on my computer, and, uh, a religious organization is not a place of public accommodation under state law or under federal law. So churches don't need to be concerned about those, um, those requirements unless, of course, the, the church would, um, or the religious organization would branch out into, um, businesses that don't have any, any connection with or identity with your, your religious, um, organization. Um, so, uh, then the next question was, what's the difference between this ordinance and Sun Prairie's ordinance? Quite frankly, I, when I reviewed them both, I didn't, I didn't see any, any significant differences. Um, I can certainly get back to that, uh, with, get back to Pastor Miles on that. But I did not see any specific exemption in the Sun Prairie ordinance regarding, um, religious organizations or private schools. But again, this ordinance doesn't apply to, uh, religious organizations, nor does it apply to schools, public or private, because those are not places of accommodation either. As, as for whether or not Pastor Miles can hire his administrative assistant that he is looking to hire, I am not in a position to give private legal advice to anybody, but I, I can tell you that there certainly is a lot of case law that talks about, um, oh, the First Amendment and also the Religious Freedom Restoration Act that restricts the government's ability to intrude into ecclesiastical or ministerial matters, um, that interfere with the church or the church's governance of its own affairs. So if, um, if the church is interested in hiring an administrative assistant that would fit those categories, of course, this ordinance wouldn't apply to that either. Okay, um, ordinance is overly broad. Uh, I, I can say that it is very similar to Sun Prairies and Appletons, and none of, neither of them have, had had challenges based on overbreadth. I can also tell you that this ordinance does not provide a private cause of action to the person who claims discriminate, being discriminated against. The only remedy in this ordinance is, is for the city to issue a municipal citation if, in fact, it's believed that, uh, uh, action has, has been taken contrary to the ordinance. There is no private right of, of action in the person that's bringing the complaint, nor is there any, um, right of action in any third party. So if there is concern about, um, litigiousness occurring, it wouldn't be as a result of this ordinance. It's a very, um, very narrow, um, cause of action, and it's, the, a municipal citation being issued. Uh, Pastor, uh, Miles is concerned about the 300-day statute of limitations. Uh, that corresponds with current state and federal law on filing discrimination complaints. And that is consistent with, um, I believe, Appleton's ordinance. It might be different in Sun Prairie's ordinance. Um, whether or not the council wants to revise the statute of limitations, that's up to them. It is not, however, an inordinate amount of time. Statutes of limitations can run as far as, um, six years on a contract or three years on a personal injury case. So 300 days or less than one year in, in general terms legally is not an inordinate amount of time. Um, Pastor Miles had a question about posters and magazines. Um, I can tell you that, uh, the state public accommodations law does have- Okay. 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 Almost there. Here we go. 10652. Um... Under the public place of accommodation or amusement. Now, of course, a church is not a place of public accommodation. However, if you go outside the ministerial focus of the church and open up a business that is secular, um... It, it, state law does prohibit directly or indirectly publishing, circulating, displaying, or mailing any written communication which the communicator knows is to the effect that any of the facilities of any public place of accommodation will be denied to any person by reason of sex, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, national origin, or ancestry. And under the city ordinance, you would also include gender identity. So if, if those facts would fit the circumstance of what Pastor Miles is referring to, there may or may not be cause for a complaint depending on the circumstances of the actual issue at hand. And I don't have any other questions from Pastor Miles. I don't know if you do, Sheena?
I think he just asked, um... Who makes the ultimate decision if an action was a violation?
Uh, actually, it would end up being the municipal judge, or if the municipal judge's decision is appealed, it would be a circuit court judge who would make the ultimate decision. The way the ordinance is set up is that complaints would be brought to the city administrator. The city administrator would send a copy of the complaint to the city attorney's office for the city attorney's office to review. The city administrator would take on the role of offering to facilitate a resolution to the matter without it moving forward to the city attorney's office for review. And if the parties are amenable to alternative dispute resolution, the city attorney, or I'm sorry, the city administrator would, would play that role. If there is no resolution of the dispute, then the city attorney's office would decide whether or not a citation would be issued. And then if it would be contested, if the citation is contested, it goes to municipal court. So that's how the process is intended to work under ordinance. The next person I... You're gonna have to forgive me with last names. People set them so fast, it's terrible that my, I didn't hear them very well. Matt Cadlec? Is that the next one?
Cadlec.
Cadlec? Um... Had questions on sexual orientation and hiring. I don't know if I got those questions down.
Concern was requirement to marry... Oh, he asked about requirements to marry, seems to be.
And that would not apply to religious organizations.
And then concerns about the issues of employment and making sure new hires are aligned with values that their church...
And again, the answer to that question has to do with the, uh... Nature of, of the position and whether it meets the ministerial or ecclesiastical purposes of the church. And if, if it's okay with you, Mayor, I won't, I won't repeat that answer for every person who had that question, if I can winnow those out. The next question, um... Uh, city has no jurisdiction over this. A question about the school districts and accommodations. Again, this ordinance wouldn't apply to school districts. The next person, I don't have any questions. I know that person had comments, but I didn't write any questions. I know there is concern about the, the bathroom issue. This ordinance does not contain any affirmative action by the, on the part of the common council to direct that certain bathrooms be used or not be used. So state law continues the way that it is, um, which is relatively unclear. There is, well, there, there is no state requirement that there be, um, certain bathrooms for certain people, but there is a state administrative code that allows places of accommodation or businesses or other places to, um, to provide different, um, places, restrooms based on the sex, uh, different sexes. So, um, that doesn't change, and there's nothing in this ordinance that requires people to allow, um, uh... Requires people to, to identify a certain way or not a certain way to, to use the, the restrooms. And that won't change under, under the ordinance. Um... You have some other ones on hand?
Looking... Actions for businesses to, um, make decisions. Maybe considered discrimination.
Right. If excluding, um, religious organizations, currently, um, business owners are subject to nondiscrimination laws for all of the other protected classes. Um, we, we like to believe that we have a absolute right to freedom of association, but that isn't accurate. There are, are laws that prohibit us from discriminating against all sorts of classes, and this would just be an additional class in this, in the city of DePere. But in terms of, of all the other protected classes, um, they have all been found to, um, be able to coexist with the freedom of association. And while I'm not aware of any constitutional right to the right of conscience. He thinks that's it. Okay. Okay. All right, um, discussion. Alder Person Krevir.
Can I just ask for clarification on something? When you said that the, the churches are excluded, did you say that this is, the only positions of a ministerial nature would be excluded from this? So if they hire, if there was a hire of, say, an IT person at a college, um, that would be subject to this? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, it, it's up to the church to make the argument and, and have someone agree with them that the position is of a ministerial or ecclesiastical nature. And I've certainly seen and heard of many churches that would, would say that that would also include custodians, janitors, librarians, all sorts of things that make the church run. Alder Person Boyd?
Um, so I, so I fully understand this. As far as the citations are, you know, that are in the ordinance, which there are none, um, the city attorney or administrator will try to resolve an issue if some complaint comes forward, correct? There is no fine. That's something we could do in the future. Other communities have that, but the intent of this is to try to resolve a situation, work with the business, try to educate and/or address it, and then move on from there, correct?
Well, that, that certainly is, is the intent of the ordinance. If the parties are interested in a alternative dispute resolution, the city administrator will, will, um, offer that assistance, but neither party is required to...
Sure.
To go along with it. And there will be coming before you, sometime before the effective date of the ordinance, a forfeiture schedule so that there would be a fine imposed for a violation. If somebody is, you know, goes through municipal court and the, and the judge finds them guilty, the judge needs to impose a forfeiture. And under our ordinances, it's up to the municipal judge in consultation with the police chief to discuss and, and recommend what that forfeiture would be. So that, that will be coming in the future. It just hasn't accompanied it.
Sure. Would those fines, and we don't really know, because it'll come in the future, be similar to the other protected classes? I mean, the other ones that are protected already? I assume there's gotta be some kind of precedence out there or something, right?
The way, um, these laws work under state and federal jurisdiction is that people make complaints to various departments, either in the state or federal, um, system, and the end result would be some sort of, of determination if there's been discrimination that you get your job back, or you get a monetary award, or you get back pay, or those sorts of things. So there really isn't generally a fine that's issued unless, I suppose, the federal government could fine employers or, or housing, um, uh, agencies, but I will tell you, their fines are gonna be much more substantial than municipal court.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Alder Person Hanson?
Uh, so at the beginning of the ordinance in section B, when it lays out the definitions for discriminate, discrimination, or discriminatory, it's defined as shall mean any act, policy, advertisement, or practice which, regardless of intent, has the effect of subjecting any person to differential treatment as a result of that person's actual perceived age, and then it lists the protected classes. So I did hear some concerns about that phrase regardless of intent, and it could potentially lead to a well-meaning person who unintentionally says or does something that might cause offense, even though they didn't mean to cause offense, and they could potentially be found in violation of the law. So just wondering what the rationale was to insert that phrase regardless of intent, and if it might be preferable to clarify that it would be an intentional act or policy that would be subject to violation of this ordinance.
That language was used because it's used in the Appleton ordinance, and I believe it's also in the Sun Prairie ordinance, but I didn't double-check that reference. It is, it's very broad, and it could subject somebody to a complaint that, even if it was unintended. Now, one point I had intended to make earlier is this is not an ordinance that prohibits offending anybody. It's an ordinance that prohibits discrimination against somebody. So it, there is a difference being, you know, offending somebody is not the same as discriminatory. It's, the ordinance certainly could be amended to take out that language regarding, regardless of intent, and it would, it would narrow it up.
Alder Person Nelson?
I guess from my perspective, that was kind of the reason to add the nonpunitive piece to it. I think, I mean, anybody who doesn't know anybody who's transgender, or has never met somebody who's transgender, it can be a little, I don't want to say different, but it's, it's something that isn't easily understood sometimes. So I think this is, this is a way to show that everybody is protected, but we, I think there's an understanding that, you know, some people, if you don't have experience with it, you might say the wrong thing, and we don't want, you know, say the wrong thing and you get a whatever dollar fine. So it's kind of to work with businesses or property managers to kind of educate and then, you know, move on from there. I think, you know, if you take out the regardless of intent, I mean, anybody can argue that their actions weren't intentional, I think. I mean, kind of. I'm not a lawyer, but I think without the, without the regardless of intent, you kind of lose that element.
Alder Person Rash?
All right. I've got a number of things, and normally I'm very short and to the point. All right. So the first thing, I do want to make a comment about the meeting tonight, and for many people, this is an extremely emotional topic on both sides. And I commend everybody for the way you acted and interacted with people. Even during the short break, that was more my need than anybody else's at the time, but there was a lot of interaction between there. So I commend everybody for being very open with your thoughts and feelings, and also very, you know, understanding and listening to both sides. That was greatly appreciated. So it shows that DePere is a welcoming community as far as, as far as I witnessed tonight. So I do have, and I raised some questions to the city attorney throughout the week, and I do have some concerns about jurisdictional issues related to this ordinance. And one of the concerns that I have is that we do have civil rights laws in place from the federal level, we also have state law in place that garner a great deal of protections for a lot of classes that are out there already. And, and with that, there's also, as, as the city attorney was just discussing, the ability to remedy such issues that might come up between two parties so that there's something that goes above and beyond a municipal fine to help make the situation different. And I, there was one person had mentioned a job interview that they went on, and the person talked about, you know, asking questions that were not relevant to a job interview. In a city situation, my understanding of the ordinance is we really couldn't do anything to afford that person the opportunity to get that job. All we could really do was, if we found that there was an issue, we went through the remedial actions, and nobody was amenable to, to actually sitting down and talking about it, the only thing we could do is issue a fine to the business that discriminated, which doesn't resolve the issue for the party that was, and maybe victimized is the wrong term to use, but that's the first thing that comes to my head. So how do, how do we, as a, as a municipal government, an ordinance like this actually put into place something that remedies a situation for the benefit of, in some sense, both parties, right? Making the education side, as Alder Person Nelson just mentioned, as well as, as, you know, making it work for the person that was discriminated against. We don't have that ability, is that correct?
The only ability we have under state law is to prosecute under a municipal ordinance violation scenario.
Okay. So we can only fine the party that violated the ordinance? There was, in some of the email exchanges that happened throughout the week, Alder Person Jennings had raised a question about a business that may place a sign, and I think I've got the wording of this right, and Alder Person Jennings, correct me if I misphrase this, but that maybe they post a sign in their business, and they're a secular business who has a very strong faith, they post a sign that says, you know, "We believe in marriage equals one man and one woman." And somebody walks in, finds a defense, and feels that their treatment in the business was discriminatory, does that, when we talk about the intent of the law, does that something that can be pushed forward in a way that that business would have to take that sign down? And I'm not an attorney either, but I would look at that as a violation of their First Amendment right to free speech, and I might be overstretching my, my legal knowledge here by saying that, but is that something that we're then crossing into a gray area that really doesn't have to, we, we need to be in, or that we don't have the jurisdiction to oversee?
You've asked about six questions, all in, in one time.
Taking time answering.
You know, the one thing everybody has to keep in mind is every single one of these circumstances will be very, very fact-specific. So to lay out a scenario and ask for an answer as to how that scenario is going to play out is nearly impossible, because there will be other factors that will possibly change the end result, and, and you'll come back to me and you say, "You said it was no, and it turned out being yes."
Well, that was my point.
Well, and, and yes, the, the question had to do with putting up a sign, and I already read the part of the state statute that talks about putting up, up signs, and there are certain circumstances that that can be considered discrimination on the, in the basis of public accommodation. But the, the purpose of the city ordinance would be to, with the city administrator's assistance, seek to educate or alternatively resolve the dispute, hopefully by figuring out what kind of sign isn't a, isn't discriminatory, what kind of sign is discriminatory, and get the parties to work together. But in the end, you're absolutely right. The only other alternative the city would have would be to issue a municipal citation.
Okay. I have, that was five answers for six questions, does that count?
Well, I lost, I lost track of one of them.
We're good. Let's see. One, in the conversation I had with somebody, and I think this maybe came up, I know the one gentleman spoke, and he was, was pretty passionate about what he was saying. I think there's, you know, for some of us, I reached out to some people that I've met through the years that are, that speak nationally on this topic, to just try to get a better feel and understanding. And I think that part of the, the struggle that I have was there's still some misunderstanding of what's going on, and one of the things I learned today was something about, and I believe it was brought up by one person that spoke in favor of this, but about being gender fluid, gender fluidity, and, and I'm confused by that, because I don't know how, how do we, how do we put an ordinance in place that allows for something like gender fluidity? Where a person who is, who would be considered gender fluid, and I don't understand the concept, so obviously bear with me if I, if it comes out incorrectly, but how do we, how do we do something in a way, from a jurisdictional standpoint as municipality, that takes into account somebody's gender fluidity, which I think is being applied under this ordinance? How does that, how does that work? And I know I'm asking again for specifics, but these are some of the quagmires that I keep falling into in terms of understanding this ordinance and how to apply it from municipal level, when there's some jurisdictional issues that I don't think that we have to make this work. So I guess there's really no answer needed, it's more of a question of rhetorical nature, and I'll kind of leave it at that. The, the other, the other comment I want to make, and I, and I know this maybe is overly simplified in some sense, but if, if I go to a business that doesn't want me there, why would I want to go back and do business with them? Whether it's a landlord, whether it's a cake baking shop, I'd cast my vote for somebody else to support them in a way, and promote them in a way that puts the other guy out of business, by getting my friends and family and everybody else that I believe in support to move their business over here. If there's some knucklehead of the community that acts like that, why would we put money in his pocket? I, I just think that, I think that we've got a number of issues here. I struggle with this ordinance on both sides. I understand both sides, I don't think I understand both sides of the argument really well, but I think I understand enough of it to say I don't get it, and I don't know that it belongs at a municipal level. I do believe it's a state and a federal issue, and that's where it belongs. And, and I think that DePere as a whole is already a very inclusive community, and, you know, as, as evidenced when we took the break, the way people interact with each other, that's a prime example of some very different viewpoints that we're actually communicating and friendly to each other. So I think we've already got that going on. I just don't understand how this ordinance brings any kind of value or benefit to the trans community or the gender fluid community, and I, I know I'm saying some of those things maybe incorrectly, but I, so I'm just, I still, I don't understand. It doesn't seem to work for me and for my legal side, which is very limited. I still struggle with the fact that I don't know that we have the jurisdiction to actually apply this kind of a ordinance within a municipal setting.
Okay.
I can't say that jurisdictionally, the city clearly has the authority to adopt an ordinance like this. There's home rule constitutional authority for the city to do this, there's authority under Chapter 66 for the city to, to do this. So jurisdictionally, the city does have the authority to adopt an ordinance. I understand you're using the term jurisdictionally perhaps a little differently, and maybe you're talking about application of the ordinance, but, you know, clearly the city does have the legal authority to adopt the ordinance.
You're correct. I think when I'm referring to jurisdictional, I'm referring to the ability of a, of the municipality to actually remedy a situation versus just apply a fine. So I think it's more important in a discrimination bent like that to be able to remedy that situation for a positive outcome and make, change that way versus just applying a fine. So you're correct, I'm probably using that term incorrectly.
Okay. Any other discussion? Alder Person Hanson?
Yeah, I respect Casey's point about the difficulty at times in proving intent, but I would like to entertain a motion to strike the phrase regardless of intent, just so we make sure that people who might do something unintentionally are not being punished. And I think, like, if a business refuses service to a customer, or a landlord refuses a rental application, or an employer refuses an application because of one of these protected classes, I think that is pretty, pretty clearly an intentional act. So I think we can clarify that it has to be an intentional act, and this ordinance would still have teeth and be able to accomplish its objectives. So I would propose amendment to strike the phrase regardless of intent, and add the word intentional before act, policy, advertisement, or practice. So it'd read discriminate, discrimination, or discriminatory shall mean any intentional act, policy, advertisement, or practice which has the effect of subjecting any person to differential treatment.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moved by Alder Person Hanson, second by Alder Person Boyd. Any discussion on the amendment? Alder Person Kevir?
I think this, even with it stricken, I don't think, I don't agree with what Alder Person Hanson just said, because there's, there are clearly institutions and businesses that, that are set up for a purpose of accommodating a certain class of people without, without the intent of being discriminatory. You know, a girls' soccer league or something like that. So you could, you, you could have a corporate rule for or against a certain class of people without the intent of being discriminatory. Maybe that's your definition of discriminatory, and I think that's a little bit gray there. But my, my point is even removing this, I don't think makes it better, because it's like the baker doesn't want to bake. They just can't from religious beliefs. It doesn't have anything to do with discrimination or anything. If I have, the Boy Scouts want to allow girls, the Girl Scouts don't want to allow boys. They're not trying to be discriminatory, that's just their rules, and that's what they were set up to be. So intent or not, I, I don't think, I don't think this is going to, I don't think it's going to matter.
Alder Person Nelson?
Well, I'm kind of a little bit confused, because I don't think a girls' soccer team or whatever you mentioned, or, or Boy Scouts, Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts would be considered a place of public accommodation or a business, so those won't be covered. But I think it kind of goes back to, if you, if you run a business, you're, you're kind of considered to be a part of that community, and you need to follow certain guidelines and, and rules to not only fit in with the community, but to serve the community. So, I mean, we do have other laws set up, you know, you can't only hire men, you can't only hire women, I mean, that's clear-cut, you know, so you're a part of the, the community instead of, you know, running against it, I would say.
Judy, this, this ordinance was based on, pretty much based on Appletons, I think, right?
Correct.
Is that what they have in, in their ordinance?
Is what, what they have?
What, the language, is that, before it's changed, is that what they have?
Yes. The, the current language that Alder Person Hanson is requesting to amend is in the Appleton ordinance.
Do you know how long Appleton has had this ordinance?
Three years. Three years.
Any other discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
Yeah, let's do a roll call, please.
Alder Person Carpenter?
Nay.
Kevir?
Nay.
Hanson?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Luick?
Nay.
Nelson?
Nay.
Rash?
Nay.
Boyd?
Aye.
Motion is defeated, was it five to three?
Three, yeah.
Five to three. Okay. Any further discussion on the original motion? Alder Person Luick?
Yeah, I want to echo something that Alder Person Rash mentioned, and I won't go into it, he read my notes here, obviously, trying to pass himself off intelligent, so. Anyways, I, I want to echo that, I do appreciate, this, in, in my term on the council of seven, eight years, has been probably the best and most civil discourse we've ever had on a topic. And I also want to echo something that I said at the finance committee, is I want to thank Alder Person Nelson for this. He has done a very admirable job on this one. The proposal he put forth was more in-depth than I think we get on any other ordinance I've seen in the past. He was willing to table it when I was out of town at the previous meeting, and I appreciate that. And then he patiently waited while I was recovering from surgery to discuss this with me personally, knowing that I'm opposed to it. So I just think, you know, a, and I think what you did tonight is great, we had a discussion, I think that's awesome, and you deserve tremendous credit for that, so I want to make sure publicly you get that credit as well. I won't go into all the reasons I'm opposed to it, Alder Person Rash mentioned, some of the jurisdictional ones. I am concerned with the implementation of this, which ties into probably my biggest concern, and tonight did nothing at all but confirm that, is I don't think anybody understands what this ordinance is going to do, and that is a huge problem for me. If we're going to pass a law, I have heard so many things tonight that were misstatements, that are absolutely contradictory statements, and actually go against what this ordinance says, and that's on both sides, for and against this ordinance. And I'd also look at all of the questions, those of you in the audience that get to see them all. Before this thing was brought to finance, I asked 33 questions of Judy and got answers on them. I think there probably were another 30 to 50 that came afterwards. And again, a lot of, and, and Judy mentioned it before, the answer most times is, it depends. So again, we are going to pass a law that we're not really sure what it's going to do until we have every single fact coming forward. But one of the bigger concerns that I have, and, and I didn't hear it tonight at all, was the ordinance is called prohibiting discrimination, you know, that's, that's the thing. Nobody talked about that tonight. We talked about sending a message and welcoming and religious freedoms and all these things, but no one talked about what this, we're trying to accomplish here. And I think the reason is, is we talked about this at finance, this ordinance has no teeth. When you look at what federal agencies and state agencies can do, they can order back pay, they can make you hire somebody, they can issue a fine, they can subpoena documents, they can require a business, they can look at patterns of discrimination. We have none of that ability here. We have a city administrator and all, former Alder Person Bauer, you know, for the first time in his life, gave credit to Larry Dila for his work here. But again, Larry's not a, a, not educated and, and does not practice this all the time dealing with discrimination. When you're looking at a federal or a state thing, you're looking at the Equal Opportunity Commission, you're looking at the Housing and Urban Development, you're looking at the Department of Labor and the Department of Justice. They bring a hammer with them when they're dealing with this kind of stuff, okay? We're going to bring, I don't even want to say a flyswatter, we're going to bring a, you know, business, do you think you discriminated? No. Complaining, did you get discriminated against? Yes. All right, we didn't really resolve anything, so we'll refer to Judy, and Judy, let's issue a fine. Okay. That resolved nothing. That did nothing for them. It did nothing for the complainant, it did nothing for the business, it did nothing for the community. We didn't prohibit discrimination. We simply said, well, you know, just let you know we have this thing. So that's my problem with this, and we discussed at a finance that it has no teeth. Unfortunately, there's just no way we got to a point where we have teeth. So even, even Alder Person Nelson mentioned, it just has no teeth to it, but we don't have a recourse other than that. So again, for me, when, when we talk application, this is a federal and a state issue, because they can bring a hammer with it. And that's where I think it belongs. But that in no means, you know, discredits the work that Casey's done on this, or all the comments that were made tonight. So I just appreciate everybody, and Alder Person Nelson, again, I appreciate what you've done on this, so, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Alder Person Kevir?
I agree with everything Alderman Luick just said. I just wanted to add too, that some of the stuff that I learned in, in, in working on this was that a couple of our larger employers in DePere already have this in their rules. A couple of people spoke about it, we, we heard about, from the standpoint of the school districts. So I think there are already institutions and significant ones in our city who already have their own policies, and they don't even need our city ordinance to, to enforce that. They're able to enforce it already. The folks that talked about concern for our students, concern for college students, I don't understand where that concern would come from, because these rules are already there. And even in the, with the companies that make, might not publish their rules on their website, I find DePere to be a very, very welcoming community already. A couple of people told us at the finance personnel committee, and I think there were one or two comments tonight about, you know, sending messages and making statements to the community that were welcome. Our body of ordinances is not for the purpose of sending messages and making statements. We should have laws in there that belong there, that are enforceable, and that have teeth, so I'm voting against it.
Hey, Alder Person Jennings?
I guess, you know, sometimes this, it's just been pitched as a feel-good ordinance. I don't think any of the transgender people would feel as though this is just a feel-good ordinance. This is something that affects them personally. They are 0.3% of the population, they look different, they act different, they're going to get discriminated against. This is not a question of if, it's when. I guess I look at some of the stuff I've researched on it, just to find out, you know, who's affected, and it's pretty egregious. I read one thing, a survey of 27,000 transgender people in a 2015 survey, 12% of them were, I don't know what the verbiage was, but they were harassed, attacked, or sexually assaulted in the bathroom in the last year. So this isn't a feel-good ordinance for them. This is, this is just bringing humanity to it. Ultimately, they're people. The, part of our foundations for this country, they were brought up. The Declaration of Independence, all men are created equal. All men and women, all, all people are created equal. I, I think this is a fundamental issue. I believe it has to happen at the city council level, the municipal level, because this body is not partisan, we're not playing sides, we're not going for the gain of political advantage over anyone else, we're trying to do what's right for our community. At the state level, guess what? It's not going to happen. It's not politically advantageous for either side to bring this up. Federal level, who knows? The ordinance, or, the wonderful chart that Alder Person Luick and, and the city attorney put together, that shows the way the different areas of employment, accommodation, public accommodation, and housing kind of flow together, they're all different in each one of those. I, I made the point that a, a veteran is protected in employment, but not protected in housing or a place of accommodation, and yet somebody could put up, no veterans allowed. That's, I, I don't, I find that kind of irritating. Would anybody do that? Possibly not. But I think that you have an ordinance in front of you that is not overly broad, it has been reviewed, it's been tested in other communities. I, I think this is a huge step forward. People I've talked to under the age of 50 just can't even believe we don't have a discrimination ordinance already. That is the future, and that's what we're looking to, I think, provide. The issue of safety came up over and over again, and everybody wants to be safe. The transgender people are not a threat. They really aren't. The ordinance is not really, should not be a threat to those of religious faith, it should not be a threat really to businesses that are, that are looking to provide services. The, the Supreme Court, it was mentioned, is The, the Supreme Court, it was mentioned, is reviewing the ordinance that touches on, on those things. That is, you know, that will be the law of the land. I mean, that, things rise up to that level. So bringing this back down to, you know, really what I believe is, is that we're dealing with people here, we need to treat them like people, we need to have a common framework for people to say, this is how we act in DePur, this is how we treat each other, this is, I just, this is a very basic human rights issue, and it's, it's not, it hasn't really been shown to affect people negatively to this point. I know people would take argument with that, but honestly, they have recourse in every way, fashion, or form. The .3% of the population are not going to turn to the .3% of the population and be able to find a job, housing, and a place to use the bathroom. There's just, we're dealing with a very, very vulnerable group that basically wants to live a life, be successful, and, and be private. So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of this ordinance. So many people I talk to just are, have a hard time fathoming that this isn't already across the board, and they think we need to do it at this level, a little discrepancies at some point, we'll get leveled out at the state level. But why should everyone have to wait years and years and years to actually get to that level? I, I think we need to do it at, at our community municipal level, where it needs to happen first.
Okay, Alder Person Rash?
I want to follow up on Alder Person Jennings. I mean, I agree with you 100% on the topic of everybody has the right to, you know, live in a safe community, to be safe, have, you know, freedom of movement, choices, and feel like you're, you're being accepted as who you are. I agree with all that. And you made a point when you said that the Supreme Court is hearing a case now that it could have implications down the road as being law of the land, which to me, again, reiterates that it's a federal or state level type of, of law that we should be looking at. So I do agree that everybody, discrimination is a bad thing all the way around, you know? It shouldn't happen, I feel bad when it happens to people, it's just not supposed to be there. So I agree with you on that. What I disagree with is whether this ordinance would actually provide any kind of safety or protection for somebody. I'm not, I'm not certain how this ordinance, by applying it and finding a violator of the ordinance, provides any kind of additional safety or protection to protected class in the community, and that's the part that I struggle with. So do I want to see people discriminated in DePur? No, absolutely not. Do I think that everybody should have the right to, to live the way they want to and to be who they want to? Absolutely. I mean, that's what makes this world a beautiful place to live in. But I don't believe that this ordinance does anything to provide any kind of safety or protection for people, and that's why I can't support it. I think this issue is a bigger issue than the municipal level. We can't provide that additional safety and support that people are looking for with this type of an ordinance. So that's why I think, I mean, you used the term feel-good, that's why I think it's a feel-good ordinance, and I'm kind of echoing that a little bit. But it's going to be, it's going to be a decision that's going to happen at a higher level of our, of our governmental system in short time, and there's case law being developed, I believe, on a regular basis, because things are being challenged across the country as it is now. I don't think that this ordinance provides any of those protections that you just mentioned.
Okay, any other discussion? And I'd just like to say that this has been a very enlightening evening for me, but I'd really like to thank all of you for being here and expressing your opinions. This is what government is supposed to be, and I really appreciate it. But let me just say that I am against any type of discrimination. The city of DePur has been a leader in a number of social issues in, in the region over the years, and this is an opportunity to lead again. Since the ordinance was based on Appleton, I called Mayor Tim Hannah to get some of his experience on the issue. And since Appleton approved their ordinance, they have had only one or two instances. The one he told me about was a bouncer at a bar who did not allow a transgender person in. He also said that the ordinance sends a message to all people, or sends a message that all people are welcome in their community, and that they are supported, and that they stand behind them. I received emails from people who, who condone certain, who don't condone certain lifestyles, and say that they are not up to Christian values. But aren't we all God's children? He created all of us. Is it Christian to ostracize and discriminate others? Jesus accepted everyone and treated them with love, dignity, and respect. I care about the city of DePur, and I like to think the community is open-minded, and I would hope that we are against any kind of discrimination, and for diversity and inclusiveness. So, any other discussion? We are going to have a roll call, yes.
Alder Person Kevir?
Nay.
Hanson?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Luick?
Nay.
Nelson?
Aye.
Rash?
Nay.
Boyd?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Nay.
It's four and four, and I vote aye. We're going to need a second reading. Whenever an ordinance isn't unanimous, it has to come back to the, to the council, and that will be at the next council meeting, which is November 21st, the budget meeting.
And they can't speak again there?
So thank you all for coming. Item eight, Resolution 17-84, urging continuation of federal historic tax credits for commercial properties. Need to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, we've got. Moved by Alder Person Hanson, seconded by Alder Person Kevir. Any discussion?
Conducting a meeting here. Can we ask Peter some questions?
If not, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, Peter.
Peter, oh. What was that? What did you say?
Item nine, voucher approval.
Motion approved, second.
Moved by Alder Person Rash, seconded by Alder Person Hanson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Item 10, operators license applications.
On previously tabled, we tabled the applicant.
Second.
Moved by Alder Person Boyd, seconded by Alder Person Carpenter. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
On new operators, we approve numbers one through 11.
Second.
Moved by Alder Person Boyd, seconded by Alder Person Hanson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
And we tabled number 12.
Second.
Moved by Alder Person Boyd, seconded by Alder Person Hanson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Item 11, future agenda items, anyone have anything? Okay, item 12, discussion of the status of Shopko Stores Operating Company versus the City of DePur cases. Please take notice that pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851G, the council may convene in closed session for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The council may then reconvene in open session to take action on any matter discussed in closed session or for such other purposes as are allowed by law. Entertained a motion going to closed session.
Second.
Moved by Alder Person Rash, seconded by, I'm missing on Alder Person Nelson. Roll call vote, please.
Alder Person Hanson?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Luick?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Rash?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
And Kevir?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.